Wait a minute, it's doing it now.
Yep, you're on it. You're on. You're good. You did it.
Okay, we can go. You can call it to order Ted.
Perfect, Joe.
Okay. I'm, uh, I'm also on YouTube in case I crash again. I don't, uh, I don't see it came up yet. It looks like it's trying to come up. Okay, we're good. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning commission to City of Danbury. February 23rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Let the record show, we're going to begin with a roll call at 7:33 PM. Commissioner Almeida.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hawley.
Here.
Commissioner Hylinski.
Here.
Commissioner Jody.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Mazzy.
Here.
Commissioner Malillo.
Here.
Commissioner Henry. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Henry is no longer on the commission. Commissioner Mershon. I do not see and I do not hear, so we're gonna mark him for now. Commissioner Najame. Same thing. Don't see, don't hear. We're gonna mark him down for absent. I am chairman headed. We have nine regular meeting, nine regular members.
Oh, here's Nelson. Nelson is in the waiting room. Let me let him in.
Let's, uh, I'm sorry, are you letting in Nelson?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go back on my board and mark, uh, Mr. Mershon as present, and I see him.
Yes, hello.
Hello, hello. Uh, the next regularly scheduled meeting is, uh, March 9th, 2021. It'll be just like this, 7:30 PM via Zoom. I see we have the February 9th, 2021 minutes have been sent to all the commission members. Everyone should have a copy. Uh, I'm sure everybody went over it. Uh, do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll, uh, motion to accept means.
Your motion by Mr. Mazzy to accept the minutes of February 9th, 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jody. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? So the minutes are accepted.
Okay.
What I'm going to do now is I'm gonna read the legal notice, uh, for this meeting into the record. Uh, notice, application to be heard by the zoning commission at a public hearing in a web-based meeting hosted on Zoom, February 23rd, 2021. The agenda to be posted will include instructions to access the Zoom meeting and application materials. Public hearing pursuant to executive order number 7I, section 19 dot C. Notice is hereby given that the following petition will be heard. Petition of BRT Scotset LLC to amend section 4 dot A dot 6 of the zoning regulations. In parentheses, add cluster active adult development to the RA 20 and RA 40 zones, end parenthesis. Theodore J. Headed Jr., Chairman, posted on the city website and the town clerk's office on February 10th, 2021. Let me go over a couple of the meetings' procedures and instructions. Uh, as I mentioned, this meeting is a Zoom meeting. It'll be held just like our regular meetings and the common council chambers. In fact, exactly like it with these small changes. It will run a little bit slower. We look to see hands, um, visually. We listen for comment, and we also have the participant page where we can see people where they want to check a box to raise their hands. So I may be calling on people to speak in favor or petition or speakers or exhibits or commission members. Uh, there may be a delay in their response. I may ask twice. Uh, so it's basically our regular meeting, just a little bit slowed down a little bit. Uh, everything was posted properly on the website. Um, and generally the way the procedure works, since this is a larger, uh, meeting here this evening with a lot more people other than our commissioners. When we get to a public hearing, we're gonna read into the record, the title of the public hearing. Uh, we're then going to have exhibits read, if any. Um, we're then going to call upon the petitioner to speak and present. We're then going to call upon anyone else wishing to speak in favor of that. And I will do that slowly and deliberately. Uh, once we get to a point where there's no one else wishing to speak in favor, we're then going to ask people that are wishing to speak in opposition. I, again, will go very slowly, hoping to see people that will speak. When we get past that part, when there's no one else wishing to speak, uh, in opposition, we're then gonna go back to the, uh, petitioner, uh, who's representing this evening, uh, to rebut any comments. Now, I mentioned that we got an awful lot of, uh, letters this evening, um, in favor, in opposition, what have you. Um, I'm gonna touch on that in a few minutes when we get into the, when we open up that public hearing. Uh, I'm gonna go into detail a little bit on that. Um, what I want to do now, however, to try and free up some space and confusion is we have some very small housekeeping matters, um, that are at the end of this agenda. I'd like to get a motion to deviate from the agenda to go over to the new business so we could just clear that up, uh, and it won't take that long. Uh, uh, Mr. Malillo.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deviate from the agenda to handle some administrative matters that can be easily disposed of.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
A second.
Again by Ms. Hylinski, any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? For the record, there was no opposition to that motion. Let us go down to number one under old business, which is basically for your information. It's, uh, an application of E W Batista Family LP Collector Car Services LLC, 39 Myrie Brook Road, F 19009 for a certificate of location approval for motor vehicle general repairs. Um, general repairs license in the IL 40 zone, public hearing scheduled for March 9th, 2021. This date is subject to change depending on circumstances related to COVID-19. Under number two, it's a petition of Berkeley Insurance Company and Compass Health Connecticut Real Estate LLC to amend the master plan of the reserve. In parentheses, that's amend phase 9B, nine, non-residential use is not serving the immediate needs of the residential development from 100,000 square feet of commercial use to 100,000 square feet of physical medical facility in patient use. Public hearing date has yet to be determined. What I would be looking for here is a motion to receive this petition to refer to the planning commission for their recommendation to notify all surrounding communities that need to be notified according to state statutes and to publish it in town clerk's office and all of the necessary required publications according to state statutes and to set a public hearing date as it is scheduled on this evening's agenda, which is subject to change depending on circumstances related to COVID-19. Mr. Malillo.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to receive the petition, file it in the town clerk's office and the zoning commission. Uh, refer to the planning commission, notify the surrounding communities, everybody else who needs to be notified under state statute. And since there's no public hearing date set as of yet, we'll, um, dispense on that one later.
Thank you very much. Good job. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Again, for the record, I did not hear opposition. I'm going to jump to oh, one very briefly. Um, I'm gonna call it, mm. No, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna do that later. I'm not gonna number that. Uh, we received today, um, a new petition. Um, and I'd like to have a motion to add it. It'll be number three this evening. Uh, it's a petition by Neil Marcus, his agent for Newtown Road LLC, 36 dash 44 Newtown Road. Maria Emanuel, Andre Emanuel Marque, Marquez and Antonio Marquez for his own change of parcel K 13188 from RA 8 to CG 20. The petition, excuse me, was received late yesterday, 2:22 after the revised agenda was posted. We can have that, it's as of record today. What I'd like to do is to get a motion to add this to number three under new business this evening, and then we'll go into the, uh, discussion of, um, referring it over. Is there a motion? Mr. Kelly makes that motion. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Hylinski. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now let me address number three under new business for this evening. Uh, there's a petition to, by attorney Neil Marcus as agent for Newtown Road LLC, 36 dash 44 Newtown Road. Maria Emanuel, Andre Emanuel Marque and Andrea Marque for zone change parcel K 13188 from RA 8 to CG 20. Do I have a motion to receive this petition, refer to the planning commission for their recommendation, notify all surrounding communities that need to be notified according to state statute, publish it in the town clerk's office and all other necessary required publications according to state statute and set the public hearing date as it is scheduled on this evening's agenda, which is subject to change depending on circumstances related to COVID-19.
Mr. Headed, before I offer a motion, it, do we have a, an anticipated public hearing date, um, on, penciled in the calendar yet?
Ms. Calitro.
Um, I'm anticipating, um, some, potentially the, uh, April, the second meeting in April, the 20th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Headed, I'd like to offer a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mallo.
I'll make a motion to receive this petition, file it in the town clerk's office, put it on record in the zoning commission office, notify the surrounding communities and towns as required by state statute. Uh, post it in the, uh, news times, set a public hearing date for April 20th.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Malillo. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mazzy. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One tiny bit of housekeeping, uh, so anybody here on this petition as well as the other three don't have to stay there for this evening. If, commission members, if you recall, we had a petition for Chipotle on who was that? Newtown Road? Danbury Newtown Road or?
Yes, Newtown Road. Yes. 81 Newtown Road.
Thank you. That has been withdrawn. All right, and I don't know if we, Sharon, do you wanna, Ms. Calitro, do you wanna just briefly discuss why or is it not, not necessary?
Well, I, it's just that they wanted to, um, serve, uh, alcohol and they, they're considered a fast food restaurant, and so you can't have, you can't do both uh, pursuant to our zoning, so, um, they have a drive-through window. Um, so their attorney has been notified and Joanne's in correspondence with him.
Any questions, commission members? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you also for the first public hearing for letting us get through that. So again, anybody that we see here on that does not have to stay for this meeting. First public hearing this evening is a petition of BRT Scotset LLC to amend section 4 dot A dot 6 of the zoning regulations. In parentheses, add cluster active adult development to the RA 20 and RA 40 zones. We're going to read a couple exhibits and reports into the record. And I'll just mention the title of them as we read them into the record. Let me first begin with reading the planning commission recommendation in um, or Ms. Calitro, does it matter if you want to do the staff report first or? We'll let that.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. You can read their planning commission recommendation then.
I'll do the small ones first.
Okay.
Planning commission recommendation, February 18th, 2021. Um, received, uh, from, to Theodore J. Headed, Chairman of Danbury Zoning Commission, from Arnold E. Finelli, Junior Chairman, Danbury Planning Commission. Uh, and commission members, you all have copies of this. Uh, regarding 838 referral petition of BRT Scotset LLC to amend section 4A6 of the zoning regulations in parentheses, add cluster active adult developments of RA 20 and RA 40 zones. At the web-based Zoom meeting held on February 17th, 2021, the City of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a negative recommendation for the following reasons. Number one, this petition is inconsistent with many of the goals, policies and recommendations of the plan of conservation and development, including but not limited to, A, the growth management policy and recommendation to concentrate future medium and high-density residential development in the urban development areas. B, the policy and recommendation to limit development in suburban areas to predominantly low-density residential neighborhoods. C, the policy and recommendation for residential neighborhoods that states that zoning regulations should be amended where necessary to protect residential neighborhoods. And D, the policies and recommendation in terms of the housing plan favor expanding the supply of affordable housing, including the continuation of density bonuses in selected multifamily districts for affordable housing. Number two, an amendment to the cluster regulations that introduces two and three family dwellings is not the appropriate strategy to provide for age-restricted units and will result in unacceptable unintended consequences throughout the city's established low-density single-family neighborhoods that will disrupt and fail to protect the character of the neighborhood. Number three, residential uses are already permitted in more than one-half of Danbury's 21 zoning districts, including higher-density housing in areas where existing infrastructure supports it, where the other principles of smart growth can be met, and where there is not a disruption of the zoning scheme. Number four, the language of the proposed petition is not consistent with Danbury's zoning scheme in terms of lot size, density and site design standards. And the language detailing the construction of the affordable units is unacceptable. Number five, the consideration of age-restricted units in specific locations with appropriate restrictions need to be further studied with the framework of the 2023 Plan of Conservation and Development to best determine the needs of the city. The motion to give this a negative recommendation was made by Mr. Yuris, seconded by Miss, Mrs. Hofstetter and passed unanimously by a roll call vote with ayes from Mr. Chiochio, Mrs. Hofstetter, Mr. Salvane, Mr. Yuris and Chairman Finelli. Also, let me read the 83B referral Westcog to Joanne, um, dated December 7th, 2020, to Joanne Reed, planning assistant from Kristen Floberg Planner, Reed, Connecticut Statutory Referral to Westcog from Danbury, attached zoning amendment. Date, December 20th, um, sorry, December 7th, 2020. Thank you for submitting the attached referral to Westcog. The opinion of Westcog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not being forwarded to an adjacent, to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. Mr. Malillo, would you please read the staff report?
Yes. Danbury Planning Commission, City of Danbury Zoning Commission from Sharon Beak, LITRO AICP, Planning Director, dated February 11th, 2021, regarding petition to amend the zoning regulations, sections 4A6, petitioner, BRT Scotset LLC, November 2020 petition. We have received a petition to amend sections 4A6 of the zoning regulations to permit cluster active development in the RA 20 and RA 40 districts. The reason given by the petitioner as to why this petition should be granted is provided in statement attached to the petition. The statement is misleading and incorrect as it refers to the petition as an active adult residential floating zone, which it is not. The petition seeks to amend the existing regulations governing cluster development in the single-family RA 20 and RA 40 zoning districts to allow for a density bonus for the construction of a cluster active develop, adult development. The petition also seeks to add two and three family dwellings to the list of permitted uses in these zones under the cluster provision if such units are age-restricted and would require that 10% of the cluster active adult units are designated as affordable as defined in CGS section 839A. A myriad of other requirements or specifications are included in the proposed amendment as will be discussed below. Placing an age restriction on a project or deed restricting units as affordable does not require municipal approval. What does require such approval is for Danbury to allow a density bonus for doing it. Comments? A history of the petitioner's intent and interest in a petition to allow for increased density for age-restricted housing was provided in the June 2020 staff report on the active adult floating zone proposed proposal that was withdrawn here and after staff report. It's, a copy of that staff report is attached so it can be included in the record of the current petition. While the current petition proposes an amendment to the zoning regulations for the entire staff, staffing, sorry, for the entire city, staff reminds the commission that Damian Development owned by the petitioner was approved for two family, sorry, was approved for two single-family lots in a 12-unit single-family cluster development on approximately 14 acres of land at 113 to 115 Clapperd Ridge Road, accessed via Damian Drive in the RA 40 zone. Should this proposed amendment be approved, staff understands that the petitioner would seek to apply said regulations to its site. The petitioner claims the creation of its proposed floating zone, albeit incorrectly labeled as is an example of smart growth and that multifamily projects are fiscally superior to single-family housing projects. The earlier staff report provides comments on these two claims. The petitioner also claims that a study of towns and cities in the region indicates that almost every town or small city other than Danbury has a regulation which allows density bonuses for the construction of age-restricted housing, particularly in areas which, which had been traditional single-family housing zones. However, it fails to provide any backup to this claim. Nor does it note that research regarding this claim provided to staff prior to submission of the petition indicates that in many of the communities it studied, said density bonus were provided for single-family detached dwelling units, therefore maintaining consistency in uses in areas of traditional single-family zones. The current petition would allow for increased density, not only for the creation of single-family dwellings and cluster development in these zones, but also for two and three family dwellings. Two and three family dwelling units are currently prohibited in the RA 20 and RA 80, I'm sorry, in RA 40 zoning districts. Danbury does not lack an accommodation for demographic and cultural shifts in society, as claimed by the petitioner. In fact, Danbury's zoning regulations allow for a multitude of housing options at varying densities. There are already a variety of housing choices, styles, communities, fee, simple and rental at various price points available in Danbury for those wishing to remain in the community. Residential uses are permitted in more than one-half of Danbury's 21 zoning districts, including several zones where multifamily housing is allowed and in which density bonuses are permitted. Density bonuses are allowed on the RMF4 and RMF6 zoning districts under the housing incentive option provision adopted pursuant to CGS sections 82GA. Higher-density housing is already permitted in areas where existing infrastructure supports it, where the other principles of smart growth can also be met, and where there is no disruption of the zoning scheme. In Danbury, the RA 20 and RA 40 zoning districts are single-family districts where multifamily units are not permitted. This petition also curiously includes language of proposed subsection 4A6K wherein it indicates the above statute did not apply. See also comments below on affordable housing. As with the previous petition, the commission may wish to focus on whether the benefits of considering a density bonus for an age-restricted housing development as proposed outweigh the potential changes in neighborhood character as well as the incompatibility of proposed uses should they be permitted to locate within traditional low-density single-family neighborhoods. Consideration could be given to more appropriate locations where projects for this age cohort could be developed that truly support the principles of smart growth. Even in a cluster development designed with the requirement that 10% of the units be affordable, the commission should consider whether this petition is too broad in terms of the land area it could impact in the Danbury community and whether it could result in unacceptable unintended consequences. While Danbury should seek to increase its supply of affordable housing units, the petition as proposed may not be the best regulatory scheme to do so. Comments on the specific language of the proposed amendment. 4A6 Cluster Development. Petitioners attempt to provide for a density bonus for active adult development in sections 4A6 of the zoning regulations is curious. It contemplates mixing the concept of cluster development, which is intended to promote environmental protections and to preserve and make available open space for recreation and conservation as stated in the zoning regulations with, one, the introduction of use is not currently permitted, two, density increases, three, age restrictions, and four, affordable housing. All may intertwine for a particular project, but may not be appropriate as proposed in terms of Danbury zoning scheme in the single-family districts. Under the proposed petition, for example, developers would be permitted to build two and three family dwellings in single-family zones with less restrictive use regulations and increased density if a portion of the land is maintained as open space. The units are age-restricted and 10% of the units are designated as affordable. The introduction of uses to the single-family zone and increase in density for cluster development is contrary to how the cluster development regulations in the single-family zones are currently applied. Cluster developments provide for no density bonus in the RA 20 and RA 40 single-family zoning districts. The density calculation in the existing sections of zoning regulations was formulated to ensure that density of a cluster development would not exceed that which would be permitted as the development proceeded as a traditional subdivision. The intent of the cluster regulations is not to promote increased density, but preserve and conserve sensitive land. Conversely, the commission may reasonably query the petitioner why it would only propose a density bonus under a cluster development for active adult units. That same question could be, could be posed, could be posited relative to the provision of affordable housing. That is, why would it propose to only require affordable housing if in a cluster active adult development? Although cluster development is encouraged, why also would active adult units only be allowed in a cluster development? Staff notes that the increase in density for affordable housing provided in both the RMF4 and RMF6 zones under the existing housing incentive option is applicable regardless of the design of the development and in these zones allows for the construction of two and three family dwellings. The existing provisions in these zoning districts demonstrate that Danbury's zoning regulations does make accommodations for both increased density and affordable housing in appropriate locations. A, uses. Staff does not support language that would allow for the addition of two and three family dwellings in single-family zones as proposed under this petition. B, ownership. Language associated with occupation of adult, of active adult community units is improperly added to this section entitled ownership. Staff notes that the use of the term active adult housing units does not reflect a defined term in the referenced federal statute 42 USC, sections 3607. The correct reference for the federal statute that addresses fair housing is 42 USC, sections 3607 to BNC. The term in the federal statute is housing for older persons, defined alternatively to mean housing occupied exclusively by persons 62 or older and housing intended and operated for occupancy of at least 80% of the units by persons 55 or older. The petition indicates the latter is applicable. There are also no provisions in this amendment regarding the applicant's responsibility, both before and after approval, to ensure the development would be and remain in compliance with the federal statute. C, lot size. The amendment would provide for a cluster active adult development on lots with a minimum size of 10 acres in both the RA 20 and RA 40 zones. The commission may reasonably question why the lot size is proposed to be doubled in the RA 20 zone, but similarly not increase in the RA 40 zone. Existing regulations require a minimum of five acres for a cluster development in the RA 20 zone and 10 acres in the RA 40 zone. Would not the same concept for a larger parcel be applicable in the RA 40 zone under the proposed active adult development? That is, why would more land not be required as density increases as compared to existing regulations? Density. It is reasonable for the commission to question the benefit of approving amendments that would almost trouble, that would almost trouble the density in order to allow for age-restricted housing and to secure only three affordable units. See affordability comments below. The table below provides an example of how the density would be calculated under the proposed amendments, assuming a minimum 10-acre site with units that are not on individual lots and with no deduction for lakes and ponds and public utility easements. Under the proposed petition, the denominator in the calculation is reduced from 20,000 square feet and 40,000 square feet in the RA 20 and RA 40 zoning districts respectively, for a standard cluster development to 15,000 square feet in both zones for the active adult cluster development. 10% of the units would be required to be affordable or, as indicated, three dwelling units, and then the table which reflects that statement. E, area and bulk. There should be no reference to District AA as the petition does not propose to create a new district. Use of this term is inappropriate. The density under the proposed petition is significantly increased. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit is reduced to fifteen thousand square feet as noted above. Of concern is the reduction in the minimum horizontal building separation by fifty percent from the required twenty feet to ten feet. There is no density or affordability justification to reduce this building separation distance. As compared to what is required for all other developments. F two or more dwellings per parcel. Similar to the above comment regarding minimum horizontal building separation. There is no density or affordability justification to exempt cluster active adult housing developments from the requirements of this section. The petition is also inconsistent with the with Danbury zoning scheme in terms of site design standards. Sections four G three of the zoning regulations provides site design standards for apartment houses. Garden apartments, row houses and two and three and two and three family residential uses develop in single lots. And in all residential zoning districts districts except the RO and the PND zone. These standards are not required for or applicable to single family dwellings and cluster developments. Except as maybe modified under sections four B six. This petition seeks to add two and three family dwellings to the RA twenty and RA forty single family zones with no such standards. The commission may reasonably question why such design standards would not be appropriate for the same two and three family dwelling units. Unit uses under the proposed petition. G open space, there are no proposed changes to this section. H sewer service, there are no proposed changes to this section. I water service, there are no proposed changes to the section. J administrative review, there are no proposed changes to the section. K affordable housing. This new section indicates that to be eligible for the density bonus as proposed. Ten percent of the active adult units shall be designated affordable housing as defined in CGS sections eight thirty nine A. CGS eight thirty nine A defines affordable housing as housing for which persons and families. Pay thirty percent or less of their annual income where such income is less than or equal to the area median income for the minute for the municipality. And which such house is located as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Additional language is provided in the second paragraph of this new section. Most of the new language mirrors similar permissions for affordable housing in the housing incentive option. Section of the zoning regulations with the exception of number three. Proposed sections four B six K three provides the total number of affordable housing units shall not be required to meet the provisions. Of CGS sections eight two GA. This reference state statute from which sections four B seven was promulgated as previously noted requires a one for one. Provision of affordable units. That is affordable units are required to be designated on a one to one basis. For each unit constructed in excess of the number of units permitted under existing applicable density limits. The commission may reasonably query the petitioner as to why this same bonus provision was not proposed under the petition. Had it been, the number of affordable housing units would in the calculation of the table above net eight affordable units as compared to three. Similarly, if a density bonus is to be considered at all, maybe all age restricted units should be affordable. The commission should also note that the last sentence of this section alters. When the affordable units can be permitted and issued a certificate of zoning compliance. As compared to similar affordable units under sections four B seven housing incentive option. This language is unacceptable, any affordable units should be permitted and certified sooner rather than later. Consistency with the plan of conservation development, P O C D. The P O C D does provide that land use regulations should be periodically reviewed. And amended to remain current with evolving development patterns in the city needs. It is questionable, however, was the petition in the format proposed really responsive to city need and would be compatible with development patterns. As proposed, the petition is inconsistent with the P O C D's growth management policy. And recommendation to concentrate future medium and high density residential development in the urban core and urban development areas. P O C D eight page thirteen. It is also inconsistent with the policy and recommendation to limit development in suburban areas. To predominantly low density residential neighborhoods, P O C D page thirteen. Additionally, the petition is inconsistent with the policy and recommendations for residential neighborhoods that states that zoning regulations. Should be amended when necessary to protect residential neighborhoods, P O C D page fourteen. In terms of the housing plan, policies and recommendations favor expanding the supply of affordable housing including. The continuation of density bonuses in selected multifamily districts for affordable housing. P O C D page thirty five. This petition would provide affordable housing in a single family zones. And while the P O C D recommends supportive actions to meet the housing needs of special needs groups. Including the elderly, there are no specific policies related to housing and density bonuses for affordable housing. P O C D page thirty six. The commission may find there is some merit to consideration of age restricted units in Danbury and this is conclusion, by the way. The commission may find there is some merit to consideration of age restricted units in Danbury. In specific locations with appropriate restrictions after proper study of the needs of the community. This may include the determination to allow for said units and zones with similar uses. Similar densities and close proximity to services and a transit network that supports and would benefit for benefit older adults. While as a general rule, the zoning commission may allow for increased density for two and three family dwelling units in an age restricted cluster development. To address the needs of elderly residents in single family zones, even though such uses are not otherwise allowed. The question is whether this petition offers the appropriate opportunity to do it. Staff thinks not. As submitted by the petitioner based on the concerns noted above, this petition raises significant concerns for Danbury. The commission reasonably may conclude that the proposed amendments to the cluster regulations is not the appropriate strategy to provide for said units. And may result in potential unacceptable unintended consequences throughout the city. Introducing two and three family dwellings into well established, single family neighborhoods as proposed. May disrupt and not protect the character of the neighborhood. If the commission were inclined to consider approving the petition, staff advises careful consideration of the proposed language in each section. The planning commission must issue its report to the zoning commission as to consistency of the proposed. Regulation with the P O C D and any other relevant recommendations. The zoning commission, if inclined to approve this petition, must state on the record its finding relative to consistency of the amendments with the P O C D. And find that such amendments will not negatively impact the health, safety and welfare of the general public.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioner Malillo. Let me also just repeat going back to page one under the comment section. A history of the petitioner's intent and interest in a petition to allow for increased density for age restricted housing. Was provided in the June tw- twenty twenty staff report and the act of adult floating zone proposal that was withdrawn here and after staff report. A copy of the staff report is attached. So attached to what Commissioner Malillo read was that staff report, so that was part of this record for this evening as well. Ah, okay. Commissioner members and the public, we're now going to go to Ms. Calitro, she has been receiving. Letters ah in favor and in opposition to the petition this evening. We are going to, I'm going to make a recommendation at some point this evening that this meeting be. Continued. And the reason for that is there may be some discussion. Based on what heard this evening to carry over to the next meeting, but there have been some letters that continue to come in. They could be coming in now and we're not seeing them that we want to make part of the record. They came past the cutoff date was, I believe, an hour prior to the beginning of this meeting, which was six thirty. Of this evening, some may have come in after that. Additionally, there was some, there were some types of email chains that were going back and forth to. They were copied with Ms. Calitro and the staff and responses were made and. Reply all was hit instead of reply. And I guess that automatically becomes the record as well, so we're going to want to make copies of those prior to the next meeting. To make sure that everything is is of public record. So I now would like to go to Ms. Calitro to start reading in those. Letters and exhibits into the record.
Chairman, just a point of information on behalf of the applicant. I don't understand the procedure. If, is it your intention to read that whole chain of emails into the record right now?
No, I think what I think what our intention is is just to read the initial emails that came in. So in other words, perhaps we got ten, twelve, fifteen letters of opposition and in favor. And those, I believe, Ms. Cleo, you're going to read into the record this evening, those chains, I guess, are still coming there. They're out of control at this point, what, why, what is, what's the point you're trying to make?
Well, you're gonna really have a very difficult time ever producing this record if you do it this way. I'd make a strong suggestion, I agree with the fact that you want to continue. I suggest that for the this evening, we do not read any of these letters into the record. Rather, we print those letters, including the responses, so that the entire. Packet would be letters which are open to the public and open to the commission. But would make a more cohesive record. God forbid you ever have to return the record to a court. You'll, you'll, you'll drive yourself nuts trying to figure out what you read in and what you didn't read in, so. I'm all for getting these into the record, but I think the proper way to do it is to print them all up. So you have, if you have, for example, letter response, sir response. Letter response, sir response, rather than have Sharon just read the letters in the next week. Maybe we'll read in the responses. I think it's a, it's a, it's a faulty process to try to get to the proper goal. I just think that there's a better way to do it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for the record, um, Sharon Calitro for the record. So I was in receipt of several dozen emails regarding this project. Um, and people have asked me to read these into the record. So I'm going to recommend to the chairman and the commission that we do read all the. The and there's letters for and against, I'm not intending to read the back and forth. That actually occurred, but with between the petitioner and the people who wrote the letters, I'm not intending to do that. I agree, we need to record them, put them in the file for the record, I'm not going to read the back and forths. But people have the, for the sake of transparency, people have emails me. And have asked that please read this letter into the record, so I'm going to again suggest that we do that.
Attorney Marcus, thank you for your concern, I'm, I'm with Ms. Cleo, oh, Mr. Malillo, sorry, I see your hand, Mr. Malillo.
I'm just wondering, Mr. Chairman, maybe this would help and Mr. Mark, Attorney Marcus might feel a little bit more comfortable with it with this. This scenario, perhaps we allow the petitioner with attorney Marcus to do their presentation as we would if we were in city hall. And then when his presentation is over, when you would normally ask if there's anybody else wishing to speak in favor. Prior to asking for that request of speaking in favor, Ms. Cleo then would read any letters in favor. Then you open up the Zoom commit Zoom meeting for anybody in favor to speak. Then once everybody in favor is done speaking and you ask if there's anybody in opposition, we would ask Ms. Cleo at that point to read the letters in opposition. Then we open up the Zoom Zoom meeting for any other members in the meeting who might be in opposition. And then after that, we will let Attorney Marcus do the rebuttal without having to think about what his presentation was while the letters are being read.
Make more sense, it would make a lot more sense.
Yeah.
Because you're going to hear opposition to a proposal before you hit the proposal, but you're right.
Ms. Calitro.
My only point was that there, there might be some. Information in the letters that you might be able to clarify in your presentation. That actually may help you. You know, explain your, your proposal.
To that point, we've already done that in a email response to each letter.
Clearly, that is what he's talking about, that's exactly.
Later time, yeah, but we've already done that, that's why I think that whole sequence makes more sense. If you hear it is a whole instead of in two pieces, but.
Listen, it can be, it can be done either way. Commissioner Malillo has a point well taken, the, the reason why. I, I thought of doing it upfront was because a lot of the letters that I read that were coming in did have some. Information that I thought you'd want to rebut during your presentation, because there were some inaccuracies, there was some. There were some section notations that needed to be corrected, I think some were saying for. Four eighty six instead of four A six, so I, I only thought if we read it now, you can fix it in your presentation. As, as far as doing it the way a commission member Malillo said, I think we could do that that way. Does that, you agree with that, Ms. Calitro?
At the discretion of the chair and and the zoning commission, all I'm going to reiterate is people have asked me to read these letters into the record. So my intention is to honor that request and I think we need to do that, so if you feel it's appropriate at a later time. As long as they do get read into the record.
Oh, I know, I, I did have to be read into the record, I don't want to exhibit, I don't want to make them emailing, I don't want to make them. Public exhibits that people can pick up copies of, I want them read in tonight, so absolutely. I'm thinking of now or when after the public hearing is open and the presentation is made. I think what we're going to do is we're clearly reading every, every letter into the record, that's, that's automatic. I think what we will do is we will open up the presentation. We will have Attorney Marcus make his presentation, we'll go with anyone wishing to speak in favor. And then if there's any letters in favor, we'll read those in. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition will read the letters in and then people can speak and I'll go over procedure after that. But it, but clearly the records are, were always intended to be. Read, the, the letters always intended to be read into the record, it's just what point of the meeting. I thought it would have been easier to do it at the beginning so that when the. Attorney for the petitioner could have clarified some of those, but let's do it that way. So with that said, I'll say, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Attorney Marcus.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Neil Marcus, Conewolf, PC one fifty eight Deer Hill Avenue in Danbury. On behalf of BRT Scotset, LLC, who is the petitioner. In joining me this evening from BRT Scotset will be Dan Bertram and Steve Sullivan from CCA. The petition to amend the Danbury zoning regulations. Hopefully the commission members have had a chance to, to look at the actual language. It was certainly referred to in the staff report. But what, to put this in a little historic perspective. Last June, we filed a petition to amend the zoning regulations to actually have a floating zone. And to allow for a concept that would improve the stock we thought. Of the elderly, not elderly, but active adult housing in the city of Danbury. Taking advantage of some, well called more creative and actually more contemporary. Design features that aren't in the Danbury zoning regulations today. That, that was heard before this commission. We heard a lot of, A, we had a staff report, which by the way is attached to the current staff report. Which has created its own issues actually, because I think our sense is that some of the letters in opposition. Pick up the old plan, because people are addressing opposition to concepts that aren't into to in today's zoning amendment. So they may have read the two staff reports thinking that they're both issues before the commission. I certainly don't know, but from our perspective, if, if you want to incorporate the old staff report. From an older application. That's historic, that's a good reference in, in history and zoning, as you'll see from our presentation, is important. And so to the extent we learned from the public in particular what their concerns were. The staff, what their concerns were, and actually from you, the members of the commission with your questions and comments. We went, we said, fine, we're going to withdraw this, we're going to go back to the drawing board and come up with a different version. Of what we thought was still a good concept. So going to the, so, so rather than creating a new zone, a floating zone. Which was originally envisioned, we went back, it was suggested, Danbury has cluster zoning. And it, the staff report says that and it's true. So we looked at four point eight point six, which is a cluster development. And we added to it the, the language that. One of the purposes that we could add is to permit cluster active adult development in RA twenty and RA forty districts. That was clearly intentional, we don't want to provide this housing in the urban core because quite honestly, as the staff report says. It's provided, we were coming up with a new concept. And this is to improve the type of housing that active adults can look forward to in Danbury. Because quite honestly, there's no reason if you want to avail yourself of this type of housing. That you'd have to be relegated. that you'd have to be relegated to a high-density zoning district. There's no reason you can't live in a cluster in an RA twenty or RA forty. It's nice housing, and that's what we want to provide. So this was intentional. Nobody should should say, I don't query this, or I wonder why. Just ask us, we'll tell you. Unfortunately, by the way, just as a side comment, the planning commission report didn't have that benefit. If there were questions that they asked as to why we did anything, they didn't ask us because we would have answered, but we're not, that's not our process. So it's unfortunate, but the uses under under four A six A, the uses would be to we've added age-restricted, one, two, and three family dwellings. Now, that's a number of different types of dwelling units. None of them themselves are the large buildings that we had envisioned in the first application. No apartment buildings. These are one, two, and three family dwellings, which are more in common with the RA twenty and RA forty zoning, depending on how they're designed, spaced out in in terms of the open space and designed and laid out. So we would say that we put in a provision in B that no less than eighty percent of the total dwelling units in the active adult community shall be active adult occupied by at least one person fifty-five years of age or older. In order to meet and maintain the requirements of of that designation is defined in forty-two U S C, section thirty-six oh seven. We put that below the paragraph B ownership. Uh, we would move that into A, into uses, because the staff report indicates that the the eh, the layout of the regulation is cumbersome, and we would agree. And we'll get we'll get to some of those recommendations later. The lot size in C, the minimum size of the parcel for this cluster active adult development, we put ten acres in the RA twenty and ten acres in the RA forty. And I'll explain why we didn't go to five acres in the RA twenty as we get into this. The density, but by the way, there is no question that we did that deliberately. And later in this evening, Steve Sullivan will go through a Danbury zoning map to show where we determined this type of housing would likely occur under our current zoning regs, our zoning map. The density, we, for the active adult residential, we picked out a number, the maximum number of dwelling units on the parcels shall not exceed eighty-five percent of the gross area of the parcel, less all lakes, ponds, and public utility easements divided by fifteen thousand square feet. So we took a parcel of land, we took a fifteen percent factor for infrastructure. That's a common number. We use it for a lot of development. And then we said that the dwelling unit would have to have a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. Now, think about this for a second. A dwelling unit in an RA twenty zone requires twenty thousand square feet. So the idea that this is characterized as either high density or medium density really dies right here, because we are talking about a very low-impact, low-density project. Now, it's not forty thousand square feet, but it's not high density, and it's not uh, even considered medium density. It's considered low density. Um, for area and bulk, we came up with a with a schedule, and we took the existing that we didn't change. And then we added in something we called District AA, very uniquely named for active adult. We will change that because it was objected to in the staff report. We'll take out the reference to AA, so it'll be one district and two districts. The following district would apply to the cluster active adult residential housing. And there is you is we show, we have minimum lot areas. We have um, the same requirements that you would have in normal zoning for setbacks, side yards, height of building, et cetera. And then there's a problem, of course, that you can't do this concept if you can't put more than one dwelling unit per parcel. Because the idea of the cluster is you would probably have a common ownership, such as a a condominium. So you would have uh, more than one dwelling unit on these parcels, obviously. So uh, we took out, we said the foregoing shall not apply to cluster active adult residential houses. If we didn't do that, then the whole exercise would have been somewhat futile. Uh, open space, we did not change, uh, and it's a noted sewer and water administrative view. But on affordable housing, let me let me just digress for a moment before I tell you what we did put in there while we did it. There's nobody in the Danbury area that has done more affordable housing, quite honestly, than I have. Uh, I've done it in unfortunately, not much in Danbury, because we've been exempt uh, from under eight dash thirty G. But about a half an hour before this meeting started, I was before the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission with my third currently pending affordable housing. I'm committed to that. Uh, Tim Hollister, who was instrumental in writing that law, is an old friend of mine. We've compared notes over the years. I'm absolutely for affordable housing. Now, having said that, this concept that we had originally was not intended for affordable housing. This is for active adult. Quite honestly, I've done a lot of these too. I'm I'm in favor of taking advantage of the ability of a community to provide a variety of housing stock to meet everybody's needs. So in the earlier presentation, when we were criticized for not providing affordable housing, we decided to make that a provision of this application. This is not intended to be a project or a concept. It would lead to a project of affordable housing. If we want to develop those, they require a much higher density than what we're talking about here. Because affordable housing does require the Robin Hood theory of you develop a mass to cover your infrastructure costs, and then you can sell housing to people who could otherwise not afford to buy it or rent it. So that concept is is barely touched on in this regulation. So what we did is we said that there'd be for the considered, in consideration of the density bonus, we would take ten percent of the active adult dwelling units and set them aside as affordable units as defined under section eight dash thirty-nine A. And then we put in a procedure here, which I will read to you, is to how you how you come up with an affordable housing plan. Uh, and it's interesting, eight dash thirty G is a concept uh, that we use in all the towns around here. We would use the same concept in Danbury. Um, the those affordable units would be constructed and and sold or rented concurrent with all the other dwelling units. And we're not going to discriminate and do one form of housing before the other. So so that's that's the that's the plan. It's not complicated. Uh, it it's obviously controversial. I'm not quite sure why. But I don't think a lot of people really who oppose it understand it, because you know why? It it's a little different from what exists in Danbury. But I want to now take a minute to address the staff report. So for the convenience of the commission, and hopefully the public will take advantage, we actually gave you written responses to the staff report. And since the staff report was a long document, thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Bob Malillo, for your presentation of it. Uh, the we decided the best way to respond was to actually insert it our responses within the document itself. Thank you, word. Uh, but uh, so we go to the first page, and we start, we have eighteen comments. And th- there was a question of why this proposal refers to active adult residential floating zones. And I will confess, that's a leftover from the last application. Our stracc team, of which I'm a member, missed that issue. We didn't edit the material correctly. And I'm going to go on record right now that the petitioner agrees. The statement should refer to the petition as quote, "cluster active adult residential housing." We were wrong in our entitling it, and we're going to change it. Uh, dropping down to the bottom of the first page, our comment two, the petitioner claims the creation of its proposed floating zone. And our comment is, it's a zoning text amendment, not a floating zone. It is, it's an amendment to the cluster housing zoning. And if that was misleading, I said, I will apologize again for the oversight in editing the prior material. Uh, the on page two of the staff report at the top, um, there there's a there's a claim that says, however, we failed to provide any backup to the claim that um, that that this that age-restricted uh, housing is appropriate for uh, traditional single-family homes, zones. Uh, the backup information upon which we made this statement was submitted to the staff in about a fifty-page study of zoning regulations that we did not attach to the application. Um, so we're going to file that with you, actually, as a supplement so that each member of the commission can personally read the regulations in the towns that we were using as reference. And later this evening, Steve Sullivan will take you through that. But it includes, in particular, we make reference to Bethel, Cheshire, Oxford, Middlebury zoning regs, which specifically allow this concept in the single-family zone. No question about it. Um, so to the extent that this was misleading, uh, I don't, it was not intended, and quite honestly, when you read the regs, I don't see how it could be misled to there. Uh, comment number four was why our affordable housing doesn't pick up the requirement of section eight dash two G small A. Our comment is that the fact that the CGS eight dash two G small A has been eliminated, we took it out for our concept, should not be curious because that it was it was designated in the staff report, it's curious why we did that. Well, there should be no curiosity. As we, as was explained, the staff report tells you why we did it. Is explained in the staff report, eight dash two G A applies where there's higher-density housing. That's my speech about eight dash thirty G. If you want to have really effective affordable housing, you got to have significant density bonuses, and that is, that creates higher-density housing. We don't want that. The petitioner does not seek to create high-density housing. The staff may not be aware of two areas in Danbury where multifamily was built successfully in the RA forty zone. And that's the problem when our staff is as young as they are, and they were kids when that was done. We weren't even thinking about zoning, but I was unfortunately in the throes of that. Uh, Lake Place at Lake Kenosha, some of you may be familiar with it. That was Danbury's first high-end condominium project. When that was built, there were no high-end condos in Danbury. As a matter of fact, there were very few condominiums in Danbury at all. Lake Place, when it was built, received all sorts of awards from the Connecticut Home Builders Association and a number of architectural magazines. That was RA forty zoning, no question about that. And we had to convince the zoning commission that we could do up to a density of six acres, that's medium density, in the RA forty zone. And we had the support of the entire community in around Lake Kenosha. People would come to those hearings because the concept just made sense. And between you and me, eh, one of the things that I've been involved in development in Danbury, I'll take a lot of pride in Lake Place. It was successful, it was built so many years ago, and it's successful today. The second one is up on Crow's Nest on Shelter Rock, Rock, the Durkin property. That was RA forty, and Nolan Kirchner, the guy who would develop Lake Place originally before George Devon built it. Uh, Nolan Kirchner came to me one day, and he said, you know, we want to do a project up on Crow's Nest. And lo and behold, I said, that's RA forty. He said, but it meets the the language of what we called the Meramec Amendment. And it did, and that was revolutionary housing. There were no RMF zones in Danbury. It was the RB five. The RB five worked in downtown Danbury, high-density, up to seventeen units per acre. But we had to create a zoning reg that allowed for a concept, and it worked best in the RA forty zone. So to suggest in the staff report that this is heresy just ignores some of the things that the town, the city of Danbury really should be proud of in in reality. That was very forward-thinking zoning of its time. By the way, it took four applications to the zoning commission to get that passed. I'm hoping that history doesn't repeat itself here, for your sake as well as mine, because this thing can be grueling. But moving on, on page three of the staff report, there's a there there's a a statement at the bottom, actually, it's at the bottom of page two that um, that talks about uh, the petitioner's attempt to provide for a density bonus for active adult is curious. And and I'm not sure why that's curious. I changed that. I said the petitioner would use the proper word is non-traditional. If the staff said, you know, what you're doing here is non-traditional, I'd say, you you bet. It is non-traditional, but to be curious is to not understand the history of the zoning laws. And that's what I'm saying, you know, history is great. Zoning is about a hundred years old and came in effectively in the twenties, nineteen twenties. Uh, during this period, a lot of things have changed. I recited Buckminster Fuller. Buckminster Fuller was an early advocate of the Garden City design. Eh, have you ever been to Sunnydale in 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 Queens or Garden City in Long Island? Those all came out of that movement, early Garden City design. People thought Buckminster Fuller was nuts. They thought he was out of his mind at the time. Now we look back and we say, this guy was somewhat of a visionary. He had some incredibly good concepts. So we would like you to look at this petition in light of more creative and more progressive zoning as you'll see in the doc, in the zoning in our surrounding communities, when Steve Sullivan gets to present them. The, okay, there's a there's a suggestion, I saw on page three, that under the proposed petition, for example, developers developers will be permitted to build two and three-family dwellings in single-family zones with less restrictive use regulations and increased density if a portion of the land, no. It's not a portion of the land, it's a large portion of the land. We're not talking about a set aside of, you know, ten percent or fifteen percent. We're talking about a large set aside, and then it's not so curious because you're coming up with, as I say, very, very progressive zoning. And eh, this is not contrary to the to the uh, concepts i- in our uh, plan of development. It's just different from some of the concepts. Uh, it's a different way to look at a glass, whether it's half full or half empty. Our eighth comment is the uh, the the commission may reasonably query, that's you guys, you can reasonably query the petitioner why it would only propose a density bonus under a clustered development for active adult units. And our comment to that is, it's done to promote a style of housing to meet a specific need. That's why we did it. We have a target of people we want to serve, and that's why we're doing the density bonus so that we can develop that housing. Not in a, not necessarily at the rate of affordability under eight dash thirty G, but at a reasonable cost by having a cluster so that you could have common maintenance in people who are seventy-five years old or sixty-five years old can sell their lawn mowers and rely on somebody to keep up the gardens. But that's why we did it. And the same thing, our comment nine, uh, why would active adults only be allowed in a cluster development? Because it advocates for seniors, it recognizes their specific needs. That's why we did it. Because it advocates for seniors, it recognizes their specific needs. That's why we did it. No, nothing, no hidden agenda. And in comment 10, also on page three, these, the existing provisions in these zoning districts demonstrate that Danbury zoning regulations do make accommodation for both increased density and affordable housing in appropriate locations. Well, the use of the word appropriate locations is discretionary. You know, we think that the, the properties that we're going to discuss when Steve Sullivan goes through his zoning map are all appropriate. They are very appropriate. Not only are they appropriate, they actually cry out for this type of zoning. That they would actually, wouldn't work as well on standard subdivision lots for RA ten, RA twenty and RA forty. So the word appropriate is, is meaningful, but discretionary. On page, at the bottom of page three, our comment 11. There's a lot of question about the, the use of the term active adult. And I agree, I don't like it. I didn't point it originally. I don't particularly like it. I'm not sure I like senior. I'm not sure I like old age. I don't like any of that stuff. However, our comment is if the current regulations need revision in terms of how we designate things, we'll do it. We'll work with them. That's not a major issue. Going over to page four, our comment number 12. It deals with referring to district AA. I think I said that earlier. We agree, we'll correct that, we'll take that out. And the other question is whether there should be a, a 10 footer or a 20 foot setback. We'll go with 20 feet. We thought 10 provided a little more flexibility, but to the extent it's going to be controversial, we'll go 20 feet. That's fine. That, that can be incorporated. On page five of the staff report, at the top, we have comment number 13. And in there, there's some discussion of again, eight dash two GA. And we say, the answer to, okay, again, there's other query. That's you guys, the commission may reasonably query the petitioner as to why the same bonus provision was not proposed under the petition. And the answer is that eight dash two GA refers to high density housing. And we are not high density. We don't want to be. We don't want to create, create that, that idea in the minds of our public. We are talking about a different type of relatively low density housing. When I was before Judge George Levine of the Superior Court on a case coming out of the town of Reading, dealing with affordable housing. And my opponent, the town council, said that what we were proposing was high density housing. Judge Levine said, counsel, he said, I come from parts of the state where half acre zoning isn't considered high density. But again, in Reading, that was high density. We're not high density. We're in Danbury, we are low density. On page five as well, our comment 15 addresses the fact that the petition is inconsistency with recommended recommendations for residential neighborhoods of the P O C D because it won't protect them. And our answer is our regulation, because it is a special exception, it gives a protection that's embodied in clustered subdivisions generally. That if the staff and the commission decide that it's not properly designed, then it should be turned down. You don't have to allow it. If, if you've decided it's properly designed, then you, you are protecting against the concerns highlighted in the P O C D. The same thing on, on the next paragraph. The, in the terms of the housing plan, policies or recommendations favor expanding the supply of affordable housing, including the continuation of density bonus in selected multifamily districts for affordable housing. That's in our P O C D. The petition would provide affordable housing in single family zones. Guess what? That's what the state of Connecticut says we're supposed to be doing under section eight dash thirty G. So to the extent if we're going to suggest that our P O C D is opposed to that, then the P O C D is contrary to the state mandate for housing. On the conclusions, you know, our comment 17. The conclusion, as submitted by the petitioner, bottom of page five, based on the concerns noted above, this petition raises significant concerns for Danbury. It's the opposite. It also raises significant opportunities. And actually, I think the concern is to reject it without understanding it or really giving it the proper consideration. That's my concern because it's a huge opportunity. Comment 18 on the top of, of page six. The commission may reasonably conclude that the proposed amendment is not the proper strategy to provide for said units. It may result in potential unacceptable unintended consequences throughout the city. We are going to provide you with a map to become a part of the record for the areas where this concept can reasonably take place. Now, if your thinking is that somebody's going to be so excited about this concept that they're going to buy up 10 acre lots in currently developed RA forty and RA twenty neighborhoods and bulldoze the housing so that they can put this concept in, then the map that we're going to present to you is going to be of somewhat limited value. But if you're going to say, most people aren't going to go out and buy up 10 houses, knock them down to build a cluster of active adult, then you're going to find that the information that Steve Sullivan will share with you is in fact a good reason to do this because it's progressive and it provides a housing stock, which we really don't have in Danbury. We have places that we call active adult, but we don't have active adult located in areas which are not in the urban core where you could mix within single family and RA twenty, RA forty and come up with a concept. And I'm going to conclude in a minute. You're all going to say thankfully. But before I do, I know that we're going to get to reading letters in favor and letters opposed later. But I've got a letter that's just on point and I'm going to take a minute. This is a letter from my old friend, Peter Damian, to Joanne Reed to give to Ted Hadad. And it says, he strongly supports B R T Scottson's proposal to amend the regulations to allow the age restricted housing within cluster development. He writes on behalf of his whole family, which is his wife, his brother, his sister-in-law. And they've lived at Damian Drive for as long as I can remember. And probably as, almost as long as Peter can remember. But, and he says that they've lived there for most of their lives, raised families, et cetera, et cetera. They sold the property to the Bertrams years ago. And they, they were happy to embrace the development that was special. Unfortunately, as Peter points out, the real estate market crashed in 2008 and the project that was originally conceived didn't work. Well, that's why zoning does change from time to time. We address situations where the market changes. And he points out that the market for single family homes is still not recovered enough to complete the project as originally envisioned, and he believes it never will. But he then goes on to say that his, his, his personal history is he was a real estate attorney in Danbury for decades and he was, I can attest to that. And actually, I'll even say he was a damn good real estate attorney. He thinks that the proposal is quite innovative as it combines the best of the cluster regs with the means to provide quality housing for seniors. It even includes some affordable units. The result would be achieved without materially changing the footprint of the original 12 buildings or adding more traffic to Clapperton Ridge. Peter recognizes that. You guys will understand why he recognizes that because you're going to get a presentation dealing with the traffic and the footprint. But he goes on to say, moreover, I don't think anyone looking at the property from the surrounding area would be able to differentiate between the proposed project and the originally approved project. And that's the safeguard. That's where you have a well-designed, well-conceived project that I talked about addressing the P O C D. He's correct. He goes on to say, my family and I are asking the zoning commission to approve this proposal because it would make it possible for the Bertrams to complete the project and to do so in the high quality manner in which it was started. Then he goes on to say, I am eighty seven years old. I find that hard to believe, Peter. I can remember two years ago when you were still chasing drop shots on the tennis court. And my family has no economic incentive to support the project, this project. That said, nothing would make us happier than look out our windows and see a finished Scotson Park community. That's important, a finished project. I'm going to tell you, some of you may be familiar with my hometown of Reading, Connecticut, where we have an historic wire mill in Georgetown. It's a huge project of now rusty, burnt out, falling down buildings with broken glass. Well, 37 years, about 35 years ago, my old friend Felix Charlie, the guy who has come up with some concepts for the old carbide building. Felix's first project with me was back on the Gilbert and Bennett project. And that was a concept that was unique, somewhat controversial and different for Reading, Connecticut, even though it was located in the Georgetown district. It was so controversial that the zoning commission turned it down. And here we are, some 35 years later, and the property is a disaster. It's been an economic disaster for the town of Reading. It's been an economic disaster for people who've tried to develop it, who've, the bonding for the sewer. It's a disaster all along the way. And quite honestly, the reason for that is my friends, and they were my friends, they were my neighbors on the zoning commission of the town of Reading, didn't have a foresight to understand that times were changed. This pulp, this old rusty factory was better used for housing, for offices, for, for retail. We had a great project. I don't want this commission or the city of Danbury, quite honestly, to ever be criticized for not understanding that things change. I'm going to share one more little vignette. Some of you know, a property located at 30 Main Street. It's now owned by the Nolan family. It's a, about a six story office building. Well, when I first came to Danbury, came back to Danbury to practice law, that building had just been approved and constructed after a variance was received to get the height of a modern building approved on Main Street. Because we had old zoning regulations back in the early seventies and it wouldn't have allowed for that building. But the zoning board of appeals gave a variance and they were able to build a building, which actually even today looks like one of the more modern buildings on Main Street in Danbury. Now, would Danbury have become like downtown Stanford, all high rises? I doubt it. But the fact is that I want you to examine our concept in a idea that it's both progressive, it's a little unique, but weigh it on the benefit it's going to have to the zoning regs and to the city of Danbury and to Peter Damian and people like him. And I think if, if you do that with an open mind, you're going to see that this makes sense. Does it need to be tweaked? I've already tweaked it based on some of the comments made by the, by the staff. The staff led more comments, there'll be more tweaks. But at this point, I'm going to ask Steve Sullivan to analyze the zoning regs that we're going to present to you and the zoning map. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you, Attorney Marcus. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, good evening. My name is Steve Sullivan. I'm vice president of C E C A Engineers in Brookfield. I won't be speaking as much as Attorney Marcus, but what I do bring with me is exhibit maps and pictures, which essentially paint a thousand words. So with that, Mr. Chairman, can I share the screen and pull up some exhibits?
Yes, yes, you can.
Okay. So this first exhibit is a sampling of density regulations for active adult or age restricted communities. Staff has requested some backup information regarding other active adult or age restricted communities. The following is just a sampling of some communities. But the focus with this exhibit is that these regulations allow active adult or age restricted housing in single family zoning districts, but allow for multifamily products. So since these regulations are age restricted, these towns are giving prospective developers a density bonus for that type of housing. So for example, the town of Bethel, our neighbors, they have in their PRD, it's a planned residential development, which allows 55 and over type communities in any residential zone. The minimum site for that one was 20 acres and they allowed six dwelling units per acre. An example of that to a much larger scale than what we're proposing is Toll Brothers Summit. That was in an R forty zone. It's actually got two communities within it. One is a age restricted and one is not age restricted. But that's a much larger development. It's like 234 units. But it is in a single family zone and it does have more than just single family dwellings. They're multifamily dwelling product types. The town of Cheshire has age restricted overlay zone in the R twenty, R forty, R eighty. Again, they have minimum site of 10 acres and they have two dwelling units per acre in the R eighteen, R forty and one and a half in the R twenties. I didn't have, I wasn't able to find an example of that type of development in Cheshire. I'm waiting some feedback from some of these planners in other towns. Oxford has age restricted housing in the Residence A Zone and they have a residential golf zone. You're probably familiar with Oxford Greens. That's a much different type of development, but the minimum site was 30 acres and 12 units, 12 dwelling units per acre. Middlebury has a senior residential district in the R forty or in a, a forty commercial district that's adjacent to a R forty. I would say this one is probably the closest to what we're proposing. And, and with that, it's actually having a higher density. But the minimum site area is five acres, maximum is 15 acres and, and six dwelling units per acre. I actually, there is a development called Middlebury Commons. If you bear with me a second. This is a, a Google Earth image of Middlebury Commons. So it's a, it's a cluster development as a circular travelway and it has four dwelling units per building. So that's just a sample of, of some of the types of developments that are done in other towns that are done in single family zoning districts, but allow multifamily products. The next exhibit, and again, these exhibits will be submitted as Attorney Marcus had mentioned. So they'll be in the, in the record, Mr. Chairman. The next exercise we, we, we performed. Can everyone see this zoning map?
Yes, sir.
So with our proposed regulation and the associated filters that comes along with it, we looked at potential properties in the city of Danbury where this type of development could occur. The filters we used are the minimum site area, which is 10 acres. The R forty and R twenty zones has to have water and sewer or, or an extension of water and sewer. And the last major filter is, has to be on a collector or arterial street. So when we did that analysis, it actually revealed that there's only three, three sites that we could find where this, this potential development we could find where this potential development can occur. One is the petitioner's property on Damian, on Clappord Ridge. Another potential site is next to the Amber Room, Levin Pembroke Road, which is an R eight twenty zone, and has the acreage and access to an arterial street. And the third property is Great Plain Road, which is R eight twenty, and that is, Great Plain is a collector road. And I believe this site has an approval from common council for water and sewer to be extended to it. So as you can see, there's not that many sites for this potential site. There could be a few more, but this is what our initial study revealed. So the next exhibit is a plan of what actually is currently approved today. There's currently twelve single family homes approved for this site. Buildings one, two, three, four, and twelve are already built as single family homes and occupied. There's a clubhouse and pool that's already built, and obviously the road is Damian Drive, the private travelway is constructed with the infrastructure. Buildings five, six, nine, ten, and eleven, the foundations are already built, they're already in there. So the only two structures that are not built at this point are seven and eight. So this is what's approved today. And well, the concept for what our petitioner is proposing is this. Same number of buildings, but adding two and three family units within the building. So if I go back to the original, you don't see much of a difference at all. The buildings are in the same locations, they're just two and three family units in buildings other than one, two, and twelve. The only difference that we note is on buildings five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, we're adding another two car garage. People like to park in the garages, so we added a parking, a two car garage on the front side of the building. So again, in our opinion, we don't see much of a difference. We're still maintaining a lot of the wooded buffer that was part of the original proposal. The last exhibit. Last exhibit is a traffic analysis by our traffic engineer, V H B, Joe Boskus. He ran some calculations for these types of developments. Scenario one is the single family development, which is twelve units. It generates about one hundred and forty eight vehicles per day. Morning peak is thirteen, and evening peak is thirteen. Scenario two is what our concept, our concept entails, which is the twenty three age restricted and the five single family for a total of twenty eight units. The vehicle trips per day for the weekday is one hundred and thirty three, which is less than the twelve single family. The morning peak is thirteen, and the evening peak is fourteen compared to the single family. Asked Joe what the difference it was between the thirteen and fourteen, and he basically said it's a statistical rounding. So essentially, there's really no difference. In actuality, there's less traffic being generated to Clappord Ridge Road. So these, this analysis clearly shows that there won't be a negative impact regarding traffic to the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding road system. Again, Damian Drive enters right onto Clappord Ridge Road, which is an arterial road, also a state road. And again, so we will submit these exhibits as part of the record. With that, I could take any questions or the commission may have, or kick it back over to Neil.
Commission members, are there any questions of Mr. Sullivan at this time?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, please, Mr. Malillo.
So I'm curious, because you're, you know, you had indicated that the analysis indicates that there won't be any traffic impact, significant traffic impact on Clappord Ridge Road. I have the no crazy scenario right now, I can't believe it, where I have two daughters who attend Danbury High School. One is a, one is a senior. So, and so I'm kind of familiar with Danbury High School traffic, both in the morning and afternoon. I remember twenty years ago, I lived over off of King Street, and I had to drive through Clappord Ridge on my way to get to Rogers Park. I used to leave my house over off of King Street to drive to Rogers Park. It took me the same length of time to drive from King, from over, from King Street, Clappord Ridge, to get to Rogers Park, as it did for the teachers who lived in Nagatuck to get to Rogers Park. So I'm, and, and traffic around the high school has gotten worse. Seeing as how that's peak travel time, I don't believe everybody's going to continue working from home. So I do think that people will start commuting back and forth to work again, as well as the school not remaining on hybrid, and so therefore, the school will get back up to one hundred percent capacity. I'm not sure how you can safely say that adding or doubling the number of residents living there is not going to impact the traffic. So I'm curious, did your traffic study take into consideration what traffic is like actually during people, at the time when most people travel, which is during the school, especially the morning hours?
Thank you, Ms.
Well, so, so these traffic generations do not take, take into account any kind of a COVID reduction in traffic. These are based on trip generations from the Institute of Transportation Engineering prior to any type of COVID reduction traffic. I think you're aware that the applicant could go out and build the, or finish up the, the, let's see, about eight remaining or seven remaining houses for single family homes, which would generate one hundred and forty eight trips. Five of those houses are already on the road system. This scenario is telling me that with the active adult, it generates less trips per day, which puts less traffic on that Clappord Ridge road system.
If I may, for a moment, add, we'd be happy to follow on.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Bertram from B R T.
Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, the idea of bringing the traffic engineer to a subsequent meeting, I think, would be, would be a good one to better answer that question. This is something where we're comparing the relative impact for two different uses from the site, not so much what is going on on Clappord Ridge today, it's just what what does this site's development contribute to what's going on in Clappord Ridge? But we, but I think it would be a good idea, Steve, to bring Joe to the next meeting.
Sure.
Thank you, because I'm just, have to think that when you consider D H S, it doesn't make it a, it makes it more of a, a different traffic scenario, because the traffic that the school, the largest high school in the state of Connecticut generates, you can't just apply normal formulas to.
No, I understand. I think he would be best to address this, because this was counterintuitive to me as well, that we could have more of a certain housing type and have less overall traffic on Clappord Ridge. So he's definitely the right person to come and address that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members, any more questions of Mr. Sullivan at this time? Commission members, I don't see hands. Joanne, do you see, Ms. Hylinski?
In the previous setup that he, that Mr. Sullivan showed us, am I wrong in seeing that there are going to be seven, three family houses, structures?
One second, I'll bring that back up.
Yeah, buildings five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven?
Correct, yes. Down below there gives you the makeup of what's occurring in each building.
Right, so with all of that, there's less traffic?
Yep. Correct. It's a different type of, and again, we'll have Joe Boskus address this, because he's the traffic engineer, but age restricted has been found to create less trips per day than a single family home, non age restricted.
Okay, well, I also agree with Commissioner Malillo, because having worked at Danbury High School for twenty years, it's a nightmare.
Mr. Ber, Mr., I'm sorry, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Malillo.
May I make one other request of Mr. Bertram, as he's talking with the traffic engineer? Because just keeping in mind that this is not a site specific application, but actually a rate, a rate change, and you have identified, you know, some other parts. But also, just to run a quick little traffic analysis, so we can see what this, what the overall city impact would be, not just one specific site, because we do have to keep in mind the impact on the entire city, since this is a, since this is a citywide rate change.
Sure.
Yes. Bertram.
Yes.
I think it's fair to ask that now, rather than when he's standing in front of us and make him go back and recalculate.
I, I think I understand, and let me, if I may clarify, we're comparing the as of right development with the current exist, the current regulation versus this change and its impact, correct? So we would look at the other two sites and say, as R eight twenty developed to its implied development plan with, you know, whatever is it possible in those sites to give you that kind of a look at, right? Is that?
Yeah. Yes, just a general overview, what a hypothetical scenario would be. I'm not, obviously, there's no, there's no predetermined site plans for any of those.
Sure, sure, sure. We just give the assumptions that go.
Right? Yes, thank you.
Absolutely, yes. It, I, I'm assuming, Mr. Bertram, that a traffic engineer would have a book of tables discussing the square footage of certain age groups, and then as it relates to a single family house and an R eight twenties zone, R eight forty zone, make a comparison. And Mr. Malillo, thank you for that, because if they can get a head start on it, rather than hit them cold when they come in the next time, I think it's a great idea. I see a hand, thank you, Mr. Bertram. I see a hand from Mr. Amita, please.
Yes, as part of this traffic study, are we taking into consideration traffic from caregivers or like medical service providers? Because, I mean, I hate to say this, but, you know, people fifty five and older have more medical issues, have more need for, you know, in-home caregivers and things like that. Is that part of the traffic study as well?
Mr. Amita, thank you for that question. I'm assuming that Mr. Sullivan could probably make a statement to that tonight, but it's the traffic engineer that would probably, I should, I'll yield that to Mr. Sullivan, though, is that, do you agree with that?
Yeah, we could, we'll have the traffic engineer address that, but I believe the institute has studied several, this is nationwide now, age restricted developments. And so any, any type of, any type of trip going to that development is part of the statistical analysis with the amount of trips. So, but again, I could, Joe can elaborate on that, but any type of trip, whether it's a service vehicle, delivery trucks, they're all taken into account into those developments.
Okay, so it sounds to me, Mr. Amita, at this point, until we hear from the traffic engineer, Mr. Sullivan is basically saying a trip is a trip, everything is taken into consideration, but I guess we could drill down on that when we speak to the other person. And he, I have, we have the screen showing, so I can't see all the boxes. I don't know if there's any other hands. Anyone else wishing to speak to Mr. Sullivan at that ti, at this time? Joanne, do you see any hands out there? What I'm going to add, Mr. Sullivan, anything else at this time?
No, would you like me to stop sharing the screen?
No, 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 well, I'm saying if you're done. Yes, and then what I'll do is I'm going to go back to Attorney Marcus to see if he has any more people to introduce, or if he has any more comments. Mr. Marcus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, Dan Bertram came in for a minute, and I have to ask, Dan, do you want to prevent any information in support of this economic impact or anything that you feel that needs to be presented at this point?
No, I think that what I'd like to do is highlight just one point about traffic, because that was one of the core items that was brought up last time around. And just so you and everyone knows what a directive was to our design team, it was that we cannot have an increase in traffic, period. And so that was a design constraint. And so I think Joe Boskus can talk to that at a subsequent meeting. As it relates to some economic impact from this, I think I'd like to defer, since I think that the issues that we brought up tonight address the bulk of the public conversation that I have read so far. And I did want to say one other thing, because Neil, you and I did not talk about this before this meeting, but I certainly have no objection if, while we're populating the record, any of the communication between myself and anyone at any time, I have, I fully support being on the record for everyone to read and see. So if that helps any part of the process later in the meeting, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Bertram. Attorney Marcus?
At this point, the applicant will rest and let you move on to others and supporter. The team will be available for any questions now in a continued session. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Ms. Calitro to read if she has any
Chairman.
Public to speak, if there's anybody in favor additionally, but I'm going to ask Ms. Calitro to read if she has any letters of people wishing to speak in favor, or any letters of in favor?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malillo.
Mr. Malillo?
I actually had one question that I was hoping to ask Attorney Marcus.
Yes.
Attorney Marcus, you know, he didn't take questions, he's passed it over, so, you know, I would like to, if I may?
Yes, yes, go ahead, please.
So Attorney Marcus, you had mentioned the very beginning of the, of your presentation, the need to tweak a couple little things on the, on the petition. That's not the first time, you know, we've heard you say that, but, but, but then I heard it a few more times. And so I'm curious, how many tweaks that you think need to be made in regard to this proposal, and whether or not those tweaks become substantive? You know, because, you know, I can see, I can see, you know, some revisions being made, which would then precipitate having to do, to republish this, you know, just the way the procedure works, and I'm just wanting to make sure that we're not going down that path.
That's a good question, Bob. I have identified in the staff, the eighteen comments to the staff report, that you've got a copy of, it was submitted to the whole commission, I've identified about four corrections. I call those tweaks. They're not, they're not substantive to speak of at all, except when you change a ten foot setback to a twenty foot setback, but you can do that in the context of this regulation, because twenty feet is more restrictive, not less restrictive. So we could do that, but as I say, if the committee, if the staff or if the commission thinks that we need to come up with a better, a better definition of active adult, we'll do it. That would be a tweak. I don't think we have to, but if it's, if it helps resolve any issues, we'll do it. Those are the types of things. But I've identified about four in the eighteen comments that we definitely will fix, and those are labels mostly, and that one setback. I don't intend to do a lot more unless we're asked to.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Marcus.
Thank you, Ms. Couple of things, if I can, first, please. Mr. Sullivan, I'm assuming, you showed this evening, you're going to copy and submit into the, into the office, so that the commission members will have those copies. Thank you. Attorney Marcus, your comments that you had made to the staff, your sixteen or eighteen points. Attorney Marcus, your comments that you had made to the staff, your 16 or 18 points, whatever, are you, are you putting that into a, an outline that you're going to also be submitting it as, for commission members to look at?
Yes, we, that was emailed to you on February 22nd, and I was hoping, actually, that it would get sent out via email before tonight's meeting to the whole, the whole commission. But you already have it, and we'll get you a hard copy, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go to Ms. Calitro, if there's anybody, I see a few people that have their mics on. You can mute those until you're called upon, so we don't get any background noise, please. So everyone mute your mics. Ms. Calitro?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of emails in, in support. So, one of which was the letter from Peter Damian, so I guess I don't have to reread that, since Attorney Marcus already, unless you want me to, he basically read the whole letter.
The bulk of it, and it's on his record.
Right, okay. Then there's an email to Joanne, this is regarding the petition submitted by BRT Scotsett LLC to amend zoning regulations to allow an active adult floating residential zone. I have no objections to this amendment. Sincerely, Shakir Greshi, 38 East Gate Road. And there's, that was submitted, I'm sorry, on February 22nd, and at 7:30 at night. And then today, February 23rd, at 5:57 PM, an email that I received from Andrea Gartner, and I'll read it into the record. Dear Chairman Haddad, I'm reaching out to you and your fellow commissioners to consider supporting Item 1 on tonight's agenda. BRT Scotsett LLC's petition to allow age-restricted housing within clustered developments. I feel that innovative approaches that are working in other parts of the country, Minnesota, Washington, California, to address population growth and the changing demographics are worth considering in Danbury. It's been my observation as a Danbury resident, property owner, former zoning commissioner, that so many petitions presented to the Commission for zoning changes have been done so hand-in-hand with city staff working and guiding developers on how to move their projects through city departments and commissions. Often, the trajectory of zoning changes have been developer slash petitioner-driven. Citywide off-trap bedding, Keystone Place at Worcester Heights Plan Neighborhood Development Destination at the Summit, a brewery in an industrial zone, dog kennels at the airport are a few examples that come to mind. However, it seems to me from the staff report that the current petitioner is an exception to the, to this preference. With the current submission, representatives of BRT Scotsett have addressed initial concerns that their original plan elicited, unfortunately, instead of recommendations on how do we get to yes, there is a scathing criticism. Additionally, there is much information out there regarding this project that isn't being dispelled by those who have the facts. I ask the zoning commission to continue the public hearing on this matter, and in the meantime, challenge staff to make positive recommendations as to how to actualize this zoning change.
Thank you.
Kindness regards, Andrea Gartner. So those are the three pieces of correspondence we have in favor.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Is there anyone wishing to speak, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? And as I said earlier, I'm going slow to listen to people or to see hands. Who else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? I do not see, I'm going through my pages, I don't see any. Joanne, anything? No. I'm now going to say, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? But prior to that, I'm going to have Ms. Calitro read the letters of opposition into the record. Ms. Calitro?
Thank you. This may take a while. Okay, so the first one, and I'm going back to some that were originally on the agenda that was posted, some that were on the revised agenda that were posted, and others that were received post the, or after the revised agenda was posted up until 6 o'clock tonight. This is an email from Jane Herschlag and Herbert Herschlag. On February 28th, we received, she sent it to Sean Harity, and Sean forwarded it to us. We strongly oppose a change to the residential zoning to allow for an increase from 12 to 28 units of age-restricted housing. We are concerned about the change in the residential character of Danbury's existing housing due to COVID-19, where we are sending this letter rather than attending the meeting. Sincerely, Jane and Herbert Herschlag. This is an email, February 18th to 27. Dear Sharon Calitro, Planning Director, I'm writing to you in support of your canvassing against the BRT project to amend zoning regulations at 1315 Clappord Ridge at Damian Development. The construction of a multifamily housing project would be a horrific, appalling detriment to that hilltop. I find that the becolic nature of that hill has already been compromised by the mansionization of the hilltop. Also, there seems to be some ecological damage to the area, especially to the South Pond of the two ponds directly across from Chambers Road. The South Pond is virtually disappearing. Please also investigate the sewer shed issue. As I understand, the connection to Scotsett Park to the Ledgemere Line was intended for the sewer flow and use of 12 single-family homes there, not a giant complex like the one proposed. In addition, the area has never been accessible to or have proximity to work services or transportation for any type of housing project, let alone one for seniors. In closing, I applaud your efforts to stop this and have read your notes concerning this to the Danbury Planning Zoning Commission, June 11th, 2020. Sincerely, Brenda O'Shea.
May I interject one thing? I received a text from someone who was, who had their hand up to speak earlier, but wasn't recognized. I don't want to interrupt Sharon, but I didn't want to lose their opportunity either to speak.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, who's that? I don't see.
It was Rob, Rob Kovaleski is his name. And they say that they can see everyone, and they're trying to speak, but they.
We don't, I don't.
Okay, so there's a technical problem. Could we come back if they solve it to be able to speak they, at a later time? I didn't mean to interrupt Sharon's reading, I just wanted to.
Now he's outside, now he's, should I let, I'll let him in, I guess.
You know what, he may have been on YouTube.
Yeah, I was just going to say, he could have been on YouTube, but not on Zoom.
Maybe.
On YouTube, and go, yeah, Joanne, let him in.
Okay, thank you, I apologize for the interruption.
Ms. Calitro, want to handle this?
Rob Kovaleski, here he is.
So, Rob, Mr. Bertram, you're saying Rob Kovaleski wants to speak in favor, is that it?
Yes, yes, he had been trying to get attention, but didn't see how to do so.
We're, we're going to fit, we're going to finish up with this. When we go back to Attorney Marcus's rebuttal, after the opposition speaks, keep him in the queue, tell him to keep watching, and like, I'll call on him.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
It's Ms. Malillo.
I would, I would feel much more comfortable allowing him to speak now, noting under COVID protocols, just the weird instances, rather than set a precedent, allowing something to come up in rebuttal that was not addressed earlier in the meeting.
Ms. Calitro, what do you think? I don't think we've ever had this happen before.
No, all of this is new. I, yeah, I, I guess I could stop, he can comment, and then I'll go back to the, in the opposition.
Why don't we do that, then? Is, I don't see him, he disappeared.
Might be on page two. Where'd he go?
Right, Mr. Kovaleski?
Yes.
Unmute your mic, you have the floor.
Can you hear me now?
We got you, can you hear?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So 14 years ago, my wife and I became residents of Scotsett Park. And, you know, we've very much enjoyed the community, the location. We've got wonderful neighbors, both of the Damias, and we have some neighbors across the street. And, you know, sometimes things don't just work out the way we all plan them, right? Nobody planned that would be living in a COVID-type world over the past 12 months, and who knows how much longer it's going to go. But I can say this, it's a wonderful development, and it would be terrific to be able to have this project completed, albeit, sometimes you need to reimagine and be innovative and agile in the way you approach challenges that come your way. So from our perspective, when we think about what has been proposed, the look of the community and our judgment would essentially look the same as it was originally intended. Don't believe there's really any change in footprint. In terms of, you know, the overall environment, I think the low-density cluster is not going to add any type of dramatic change to the community. And the other thing is, is that from my vantage point, and I'm not a traffic commissioner, but I don't think it's going to have any type of material impact on the surrounding neighborhood. You know, the traffic patterns that have, had been occurring going past the high school during school sessions, it's a pretty known pattern. And I don't think that the 28 residences overall, with the study that's been done so far, and obviously, there's going to be more discussed on the next go-around, I don't believe that it's going to flood the area with additional traffic. I think that traffic just comes from the roadway system where people are traveling from, you know, be it up on Clappord Ridge, and they have to get down to 84. So I just wanted to share that, you know, after 14 years of living in an uncompleted development, we would love to see change to be able to bring to fruition as close to the original vision as originally imagined. So I rest, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kovaleski, stay there for a moment, please. Can you just give me your address?
Yes, it's 2 Damian Drive in Danbury, Connecticut.
Thank you very much. Commission members, are there any questions of Mr. Kovaleski at this time? I don't see any, I don't hear any. Thank you very much. Let us go, Ms. Calitro, to read in, to complete the rest of the, anyone wishing to speak in opposition portion of the letters.
Okay, thank you. This is an email from Andre Havasi, dated February 21st. I received a flyer about the proposed project in our neighborhood, BRT Scotsett LLC. I have to say upfront that I'm against the project. I'm a homeowner and currently reside on Clappord Ridge. I grew up on Clappord Ridge, four houses down from my current residence. I have observed how, since the 70s, how much traffic flow and its speed has increased. I would also like to add that due to the traffic problems, my neighbor who works in New York State chooses to go down King Street and get on Milltown Road to get to 84, because he doesn't like dealing with all the traffic. I've also done this myself a few times, also with Danbury High School located where it is. Traffic has always been a problem in the mornings and the mid-afternoon. As a Danbury police officer, for the past 15 years, I'm well aware of the amount of accidents that occur on Clappord Ridge. I also know that with the addition of condos, increasing residency in any community can also bring up the crime, bring up the crime rate a small percentage. Excuse me, sorry. This is a relatively quiet suburban area of the city, and if we all allow these condos to be built, that will open the door for more condo construction in a more suburban area where there's possible large tracts of land. Once again, I'd like to stress that I'm against this project. Thank you for your time, Andre Havasi. And later, an additional email from him. I would also like to add to my previous email that the construction of a five-story condo at this location on the top of one of the highest points in Danbury would be an enormous eyesore, which will be visible from several points in the city. Also, for what it's worth, Clappord Ridge Road is a state road, the city does not maintain it. The city won't even pick up a deceased deer or cut up a tree limb if one falls. Clappord Ridge is already horrible with all the potholes and cracks. So if this passes, not only will we have more traffic due to the possible future residents, don't forget the several months to possibly a year plus. We will have heavy construction equipment going up and down Clappord Ridge while the project is being built. This will ruin the Clappord Ridge even more than it is already. Thank you again, Andre Havasi. Email from Allison Reiser, Monday, February 22nd. Hello, I'm very opposed to the zone change. We love our quiet neighborhood on Zen Road and believe that this will create a negative impact on property values as well as traffic. Thank you for your time. It's an email from James Lukasek, February 19th. Hello, Mrs. Calitro, I've lived at 22 Eastwood Road, Danbury, Connecticut, my entire life. I am now in college. I heard about BRT Scotsett's petition to change Section 486 of the zoning regulations. And I want, I want you to know that I am not in favor. Changing the zone just to allow unnecessary, inappropriate construction doesn't help Danbury and doesn't seem fair to the many residents who chose to live there because of the current zoning. It will change the neighborhood and our city's character, not a good move. Just wanted to let you know my thoughts. Sincerely, James Lukasek. P.S. I had an excellent internship with the City of Danbury DHS last summer. This is from Jean Campbell, dated Saturday, February 20th. Mrs. Calitro, I made a mistake typing your address, so I hope this goes through. Good afternoon. Living on Hillendale Road since 1975, I have witnessed incredible growth, not only in the city of Danbury, but also in my neighborhood. Hillendale Road is connected to East Gate Road in Golden Heights and runs parallel to Clappord Ridge, AKA Route 39. It is also down the road from Danbury High School. Being primarily a neighborhood of single-family homes, it is concerning to have learned recently that Mr. Dan Bertram, Principal at BRT Companies, has resurrected his plan to build age-restricted housing off of Clappord Ridge Road. While I have to admire Mr. Bertram's perseverance on this project, it is not compatible with this neighborhood. Without going into the failure of Scotsett Park to attract buyers, when it was initially developed for single-family residential housing several years ago, I thought it was foolhardy to attempt to put 100 units of age-restricted housing there, and it is still foolhardy to amend that plan to 28 units. Mr. Bertram's comments in the recent News Times article modified our goals to come up with what I think will be a beautiful project that is right-size for the community and that will have zero impact, is not exactly accurate, in my opinion. It will have 100% impact, and here are just a few examples. Entering and exiting Damian Road off Clappord Ridge will be challenging at best, as it is a heavily traveled road with blind spots to the north and south of the exit entrance point. State of Connecticut might need to put up a traffic signal to handle that situation. Inclement weather makes for hazardous driving in this neck of the woods. As far as I know, there is only one way in and/or out, which brings up safety concerns. During the construction of the original Scotsett Park homes, it caused runoff, increased water runoff onto East Gate, in addition to dirt mudslides. This would be a problem for the residents on East Gate and even those below East Gate Road. This would be the only multi-dwelling building in an area that is residential. Aesthetically, it would not blend in with the surrounding areas. While it might give a nice overlooking view, it's, it is still going to stick out like a sore thumb. Even trees won't help hide it. Addressing the concept of age-restricted housing as a senior living in this new development is not at all appealing. Being stuck at the top of the hill is not my ideal place to retire. Was any market research done by BRT to garner opinions of the potential audience to whom this concept would be pitched? Most Connecticut cities are looking to bring their older residents to a downtown area, for example, New Haven, Stanford, where they can avail themselves easily of services, recreation, public transportation, and entertainment. This section of Danbury is not on the heart transit system, transportation system. Thus, if any residents want to avail themselves of public transportation, they would need to call the sweetheart system. In the aforementioned News Times article, it was mentioned that the original Scotsett Park development was not completed. This observation should be taken into consideration. Has there been any good explanation for that? I'm extremely curious to hear what Mr. Bertram and BRT have to say about that before approving any current plans. I would, I could continue, but I think I've made my point on why this plan needs to be denied. Again, please note that I haven't even addressed what the cost of purchasing or renting one of these dwellings could be. What is deemed affordable lately is truly not by the average senior citizen, but that is a discussion for another time. Mr. Bertram should focus his energies on bringing affordable housing, residential housing, to downtown Danbury as he is current, as he currently is. Making downtown Danbury a more attractive place to live for individuals, regardless of age, to live perhaps workshop, dine, or just walk is a better use of his talents and expertise. Would any of you wish to live in one of Mr. Bertram's planned age-restricted homes up on Damian Drive? Would Mr. Bertram consider living there? I assure you that I wouldn't, I would not, and no others who share my opinions. Please deny this request. Perhaps this property can be turned into a park where people can enjoy the view without it being burdensome to those who live in the neighborhood and who will surely feel its negative impact. Thank you for considering my request, Jean F. Campbell. It's the email dated February 21st. This email's to voice my concerns regarding his only change for a proposed senior center on, senior center on Damian Drive. My concerns include loss of property values, the fact that if this change is allowed, who knows what neighborhood they will go for approval in next. There are several. There are several underdeveloped commercial sites within our city that a senior housing facility can be built and not just dropped into a residential neighborhood. Topping all of my concern would be the increased traffic on this already have al- already very busy road. I've been a police officer in the city of Danbury for over thirty-six years, and during this time I've witnessed numerous accidents on this, on the stretch of road between Damian Drive and Ledgemere Drive, the two locations for access to the proposed site. Many of these accidents have been serious and have included fatalities. I believe that the increased traffic would severely impede normal slash routine traffic in this already congested area and put residents at greater risk for a motor vehicle, uh, crash. Regards, Jay Mortara. Uh, this email received Sunday, February twenty-second. Sharon, I'm writing in opposition of the BRT Wisconsin Project Zone Change as it will put a strain on an already traffic choke Clapwood Ridge and will change the demographics of our area and our city for future generations. I feel this would be a detriment to our community. Thank you, John Newmuller. Another email, February twentieth. Uh, please know my object, objection to allowing the construction of condominiums, apartment buildings, or other multi-occupant structures in areas with single-family zoning. If there's a need for such additional zoning in Danbury, it should be considered for land available in other locations. Thank you, Judy Weiss. Email, uh, again, the Sunday, February twenty-first. Dear Sharon, please make sure that my email reaches a planning and zoning department in regard to the subject amendment. I believe this is very bad idea and one that will further deteriorate Danbury. Our streets are already overloaded with traffic and underserved by maintenance. Our schools are already other, underfunded and overcrowded. Population density would be halt, should be halted. We should be creating open space for future generations. Regards, Kathleen Felix. Uh, this email again, uh, received Monday, February twenty-second. Dear Planning and Zoning, I am a resident taxpayer and homeowner residing in eleven Coach Road for thirty-seven years. This email is to voice my opposition to a zoning change for a proposed senior center on Damian Drive. I believe it is highly inappropriate to build such a facility in the residential area. Clapper Ridge Road already experienced, experiences extraordinary traffic issues due to, due to the high school congestion, and this will exacerbate those problems between staff, residents, and visitors to the facility. This housing project should, should be built in an already approved zoning area in a safer, more appropriate location. It also concerns me that is own, that a change to the zoning rules could open up the community, could open the community up, excuse me, to other inappropriate projects in other residential neighborhoods in the future. I am requesting the zoning commission deny this zone change. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Lorraine Bubnyat. Uh, this is a letter that came with an email, so I'm just going to read the letter. Uh, because she asked in the email that it be read. Uh, dear Mrs. Cleetro, uh, we are firmly against the petition of BRT Wisconsin LLC to amend section four eight-six of the zoning regulations allowing the construction of a five-story, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long building amid a quiet residential Danbury community. This will drastically change the character of this neighborhood and will, and will enable continued invasive, destructive, improper, and mercenary future projects in this neighborhood and throughout our city. We will be at the zoning commission meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-third. Thank you for supporting this position. Let us know what more we can do to prevent this petition from going forward. Sincerely, Lynn Hamilton and Stephen Luke Casey. February email received February twenty-second. Good morning, Mrs. Cleetro. I understand that the above entity is requesting a zoning change for the Damian property off of Clapwood Ridge Road. I would like to voice my opposition to the proposed change. I live, I live in off Clapwood Ridge Road and travel it daily. Aside from the aesthetic of an apartment building in a residential neighborhood, the added traffic would be a burden on an already very busy road. Thank you for your consideration, Lisa C. Patton. Email received, uh, Sunday, February twenty-first. Uh, I hope you can open this link. Uh, this is from America Comstock, and it was, it's a Wall Street, uh, Journal article about not investing in senior housing. I did not print that, uh, we, we can print it out, but I did not intend to read that into the record. She also submitted a second email to whom it may concern. I am against this development on Damian Drive. BRT isn't a reputable company, and they aren't interested in anything but making money. When I look at this, I think they can't possibly be serious. It could be two more stories than the Marriott next to Chuck Steakhouse. I hope they're not trying to say they can't make money on building houses on that lot. The Danbury market is white-hot right now. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Mary Comstock. Uh, another, uh, email received Monday, February twenty-second. Dear Sharon, I'm writing this letter to inform you they vehemently oppose the above petition to change zoning regulations by creating an active adult residential floating zone, A.R. This would change the face of residential neighborhoods as well as plummet home values. The proposed change would also add to the congest, add to the congestion and at certain times of day hazardous trap, travel on Clapwood Ridge Road. Danbury has already suffered a great deal by zoning changes that have destroyed the fabric of many neighborhoods by allowing single-family homes turned into condos on postage-stamped lots. We must draw the line in the sand and stop, sand and stop companies such as BRT who give nothing back to our community, line their pockets and move on. Don't let this pass. Enough is enough. Thank you, Marilyn F. Delotti. Uh, this is an email, uh, received February twenty-second. Dear Planning and Zoning, uh, I am a resident taxpayer and homeowner residing in eleven Coach Road for thirty-seven years. My wife and I raised our family of five children in this beautiful community. We want to see it stay that way. This email is to voice my concerns and strong opposition regarding a zoning change for proposed senior center at, on Damian Drive. To have this project built into our residential neighborhood is insane. The traffic problems at rush hour in my daily work commute is already time-consuming, causing additional safety concerns, not to mention possible property devaluation. The already congested area will only increase the risk of additional serious vehicle accidents, which are already a concern. This housing project should be built in an already approved zoning area in a safer, more appropriate location. I plead with the zoning commo, uh, commission to deny the zoning change for the safety and benefit of our community. Regards, Paul J. Bubnyat. Uh, it's an email received Sunday, February twenty-first. Dear Sharon, I am totally not in favor of the petition of BRT Wisconsin to amend section forty-six of the zoning regulations, which would allow a five-story two-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long building. I sincerely believe that this project would be a detriment to our community. I say no. Thank you, your friend Raymond Belizna. Uh, this is an email dated, uh, Monday, February twenty-second, uh, addressed to me. The BRT proposal for the building of two-hundred-and-fifty-unit complex has many areas of concern for me and many residents. The Danbury City Plan encourages this type of development and excuse me, this type of development in locations close to downtown, so residents can use public transportation or be able to walk to shopping, doctor appointments, groceries, et cetera. The proposal click, location clearly has no public transportation, making it difficult for residents of the proposed community to walk to anything. Hard would have to add a new route to accommodate residents of this development. If the city, city approves this proposal, it would open up Pandora's Box. This exception request, if granted, will, would allow developers to build cluster housing not only around my property. For example, the Kotswell property, they would be able to build in many other areas of Danbury. It would forever change the fabric of my city as well as many other Danbury neighborhoods. BRT bought this property with the intent to build large, expensive, single-family homes. The homes didn't sell. I imagine BRT took a financial loss. Now they want to repropose a new development on this property that would create a new and very different outcome for the neighborhood, all to turn their loss into a gain at the expense of so many long-term residents like myself. When BRT brought this property, they obviously knew the zoning. Now they want the city to basically bail them out by changing the zoning from single-family to multifamily. Is it the city's responsibility to bail out this developer when they made, when they made what turned out to be a bad business decision? The answer should be no. Corporations, LLCs, and even small businesses must survive or die based on their own decisions. That is free enterprise. The city has been very generous with tax breaks for BRT. Let's not change the zoning laws to accommodate a bad business decision. For all the reasons above, I am against this proposal. Yours truly, Ray McAragon. It's an email received Sunday, twenty, uh, February twenty-first. Dear Miss Cleetro, please have this email read into the commission record on February twenty-third, twenty-twenty. I am writing to oppose the BRT Amendment Petition under consideration. Um, I am a resident of East Gate Road, Danbury, in close proximity to the proposed Damian Development. I strongly reject the idea that the Planning and Zoning Commission should allow higher-density developments in single-family home zones. There is very little justification for such a bonus. There are many other areas in Danbury that can accommodate older residents, and the number of proposed affordable units is tiny. Damian Drive site has no public transportation, so residents will have to use private vehicles. Damian Drive is located on the bend of Clapwood Ridge Road, so visibility is limited, and turning out onto the busy road is hazardous, especially for older adults. I understand the proposed change would allow cluster housing and multifamily housing developments all over Danbury. This would have a serious adverse impact on the, on the character of our residential neighborhoods. I urge the commissions to reject this petition. Sincerely, Roger Snow. Uh, email received Sunday, February twenty-first. Dear Sharon, I, as I am not sure whose idea this is, I am guessing they do not travel at Clapwood Ridge often. The traffic is worse every year, and the additional traffic this would generate would create a hazard for students, high school staff, and any commuter who travels this road. There would be no change, there should be no change of the comprehensive plan, P and Z regulations, to allow for any building to be built on any ten-acre site without ample notification of all the resident taxpayers in the area as so stipulated by law. We, we are against a proposed building of a five-story assisted-living facility on the identified property off adjacent to Clapwood Ridge. Thank you, Richard and Susan Cesare. It's an email dated February twenty-second. Good morning, Sharon. I'm sending this email to voice my concern and opposition to the proposed senior community on Damian Drive currently under consideration. My concerns are several, however, my immediate concern is the safety issue regarding such increased traffic on Clapwood Ridge. This road has already plagued with numerous traffic safety issues. Traffic is commonly congested and motor vehicle accidents are numerous. Adding a five-story residential structure could bring the state road to standstill at points of the day. Accidents have been numerous and have been so severe that, that several have resulted in tragic loss of life. I also feel that this zoning change will have impacts beyond my neighborhood. It will open the door to have any neighborhood at risk for such a business. I love our city because it has a vibrant business community but retains wonderful, safe neighborhoods for our families. This could also drastically impact property values. This developer purchased this land to develop an upscale, upscale neighborhood with single-family dwellings as evidenced by the foundation still on the site. Thank you for giving the Danbury community an opportunity to express our concerns. Regards, Sheila DeAngelo. It's an email received Monday, February twenty-second. Uh, as a property owner on Clapwood Ridge Road, I am objecting to the BRT Wisconsin LLC proposal to change the zoning regulations regarding the building of a monstrosity of a structure basically across the street from my residence, which would destroy the country appeal of the area and add to the traffic congestion of Route thirty-nine. The morning traffic, uh, due to Danbury High School varies between a crawl and a standstill during the school year. When there isn't heavy traffic, cars fly up and down Clapwood Ridge, making it dangerous for other cars to enter the main route from side streets or driveways. Case in point, on January thirty-first, a southbound car and a northbound car collided directly in front of my property, leaving one of the drivers pinned in the car to await extrication. It was freezing cold that night, and I remember detouring down East Gate and exiting through Golden Heights to get to my home. About a week and a half later, I was coming home from work and came upon police cars and ambulance and a fire truck, all the lights flashing, and I believe there was a tow truck on the site as well. For that issue, I was detoured down Farm Street, up Berkeley Street to get home. Clapwood Ridge Road does not need additional congestion of traffic that this zoning change would bring about, and I don't need to stare up at a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot, five-story building every day. When my parents built the house I grew up in and then inherited, our address was in the town of Danbury as opposed to being within city limits. Eventually that changed, but the country aspect of Clapwood Ridge with its single-family dwellings has remained intact. BRT has no business building a multifamily structure on Clapwood Ridge Road. I submit this for your consideration. Sheila A. DePalma Robinson. Uh, email dated February twenty-first. Dear Miss Cleetro, please have this email read into the record on uh, February twenty-third. I, I am writing to oppose a BRT Wisconsin petition under consideration. As a resident of East Gate Road in the Clapwood Ridge neighborhood, I strongly object to the idea that the Planning and Zoning Commission should allow higher-density developments in single-family neighborhoods. The justification for such a bonus is weak since there are lots of areas in Danbury to accommodate old, older residents, and the actual number of affordable housing units is tiny. It strikes me as an excuse to introduce cluster and multifamily units in inappropriate areas where they could destroy the character of these neighbor, neighborhoods. The addition of more traffic on Clapwood Ridge would be particularly troubling. Beyond my specific neighborhood, I understand this change would allow such developments all over Danbury, which would have a deleterious, uh, impact on our residential areas. I hope the commission will see the danger of accepting this petition in both the short and long term. Sincerely, Suzanne Silverman. Uh, this is the email dated, uh, Saturday, February twentieth. Mr. Cleetro, please have this read into the record during the public hearing. Thank you, Thomas Per, uh, Pura. Dear Commission Members, the February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one report from Sharon B. Cleetro, ACP Planning Director, City of Danbury sums up perfectly why this zoning change should be rejected. I will highlight but a few of her comments. One, the petitioner claims that a study of towns and cities in the region indicates that almost every town or small city other than Danbury has a regulation which allows density bonuses for the construction of age-restricted housing, particularly in areas which have been traditional single-family housing zones. However, the petitioner fails to provide any backup to this claim. Two, consideration could be given to more appropriate locations where projects for this age cohort could be developed that truly summarize, excuse me, truly support the principles of smart growth for the city of Danbury. Three, the staff does not support the language which, that would allow for the addition of two and three-family dwellings in single-family zones as proposed under the petition. Four, there's no density affordability justification to reduce the building separation distance as compared to what is required for all other developments. Five, the petition is also inconsistent with Danbury zoning scheme in terms of site design standards. Six, it is questionable whether the petition is really responses the needs to city needs and would be compatible with development patterns. As proposed, the petition is inconsistent with the develop, with the P O C D's growth management policy and recommendations to concentrate future medium-high-density residential development in the urban core and urban development areas. It is also inconsistent with the policy and recommendation to limit development in suburban areas to predominantly low-density residential neighborhoods. Seven, introducing two and three-family dwellings into well-established, three, I'm sorry, into well-established, single-family neighbors, neighborhoods as posed may destruct, disrupt and not protect the character of the neighborhood. I believe this petition is really not in the best interest for the city of Danbury, and I ask you not to approve it. Thank you, Thomas Pura. Uh, email received February twenty-second. Dear Miss Cleetro, I am not in favor of this project, BRT to amend section four eight-six of the zoning regulations to allow a five-story building. This neighborhood has been disrupted enough. Animals have nowhere to go and are wandering into everyone's backyard. I am totally, totally and completely against this project and hope you will listen to us, the people in the neighborhood, and new building sites are not tolerated here. I am a voice, Victoria Boney. February twenty-second. Uh, dear Miss Cleetro, we are residents of Danbury, who have resided in a single-family home on Payden Air and Road since nineteen eighty-eight. Any proposed amendment to section four eight-six of the zoning regulations, especially one now being entertained concerning the proposed BRT project on Clapwood Ridge Road would be a travesty. We hope you and the board will deny changes to section four eight-six that has served the city of Danbury's vision so well over the years. Thank you for your service and your anticipated support against any amendment to four eight-six. Sincerely, William and Denise Weber. Uh, this is an email received, uh, Monday, February twenty-second. Uh, to Sharon Cleetro, Planning Director. As a resident, resident of Golden Heights Road, I am adamantly opposed to BRT Wisconsin LLC's petition to amend zoning regulations which will allow them to build a five-story, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long building in my residential neighborhood. Why does BRT want to change the entire zoning for the area? BRT made their million-dollar house mistake bed. Now they have to lie in it. Please do not sacrifice the future of Danbury's acreage to make BRT happy and recoup their losses. This isn't just a one-time deal. If this proposal is approved, it might be a builder's dream, but will be a disaster for our city. The negative impacts to our quality of life and those of my neighbors are many. To start, we would have to look at a massive five-story structure when I look at my front window. This is a residential neighborhood. Five-story structure should not be here. In addition to apartment houses, there will be one, two, and three-family dwellings on the planet. Why would an age fifty-five and older community need or want multifamily dwellings with two or more bedrooms? Would kids be allowed to live in this fifty-five-plus community? BRT is telling us it will be a fifty-five-plus community, but looking at the size of these units in reality seems that, it seems the plan might instead be to fill these apartments to the max with families that will overcrowder already bursting at the seams schools. I have two kids in the school district, and I have one who just graduated last June. Overcrowding in the schools is a real, is very real and huge problem. real is very real and huge problem. Why would we allow BRT to compound the problem? What do they care about overcrowded schools? They don't. For this reason, the zoning board should see the writing on the foreseeable wall and say no to this project. But there are many more reasons. Additionally, the impact on the roads will adversely affect not just myself and my neighbors, but everyone who uses Clappard Ridge on a regular basis. Anyone who has a child at Danbury High School can attest to that. I can I could tell you that it isn't easy on a regular day, even when schools are not open to get onto Clappard Ridge from the top of my street, Golden Heights. Will a traffic review during reasonable times of day and night be conducted to see the negative impact on these roads when an additional hundred or more cars are added? Clappard Ridge is already a dangerous road. There would be accidents galore. It's too curvy, narrow and drop and drivers fly by. Finally, the impact of blasting too close to our homes and changing the terrain to accommodate BRT's wants and needs will negatively impact wildlife, change the runoff of rainwater to neighbors living below. Ask East Gate residents about this. Affect the safety of the entire neighborhood's well water and will open up our entire city of Danbury to these kinds of problems forever. For these reasons, I say no to this proposal. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Kathleen Anderson. It's an email I received. Sharon, a great article on Scotset, better yet, your opinion on the project, living down the road from this proposed project and seeing what BRT did with the existing project, he should have no chance to build trailers on his property. Hopeful as well with you, Janice. Janice R. Guy. See email received Tuesday, February 23rd. Dear Ms. Cleeter, I'm writing to express my objection to the petition to amend the zoning regulations for a six by BRT Scotset LLC. The current zoning regulations of the sites of issue were placed were placed for sound reasons. The zoning is consistent with the neighborhood characteristics, provides some needed protection of the land stability for the safety of all the residents and properties located below the ridge on the east side of the steep slope as well as the traffic load of Route 39, allowing the petition will have a profound will have profound negative consequences to the zoning stability of the entire city and impose unnecessary risks to the residents down the hill on East Gate Road. The petitioner's motivation of maximizing their profit by changing the existing zoning rule they they bought into is clear. The city of Danbury has plans in place for citywide housing and development and does not need the buildup does not need the buildup as the petitioner wants at these particular sites. I would appreciate if this letter could be read and included in the notes of tonight's meeting on the subject. Many thanks and best regards. Ciao. John Hu. Sue. This is an additional email I received today. Good afternoon, Sharon. This is the response that I received from Dan Bertram regarding the proposed zoning change for the Scotset Park. I stand fast on my original letter to you as with as well, I'm sorry, having trouble reading this small print. As well, traffic, as traffic will increase immensely, you are introducing senior drivers into an already congested, windy and highly traveled section Route 39. I believe that not only creating a public safety issue for skilled property attorneys to use at a later date and time to introduce similar structures and projects into any residential neighborhoods within the city. I believe a project of this type place would would create a negative impact on the quality of quality of life and will be fiscally detrimental to existing property owners. Additionally, projects such as this create a burden on the infrastructure of the cities, including water supplies, sewer lines, streets and highways. Thank you, Jay Mortara. And I'm not going to read. That was an email chain from Mr. Bertram back to Mr. Mortara and then he emailed me back directly. This is an email received Tuesday, February 23rd. Dear Sharon, BRT, contact me directly concerning this project with a print at as to many, how many units could be built up there with the exit of this development onto Clappard Ridge. My wish is that the zoning commission give this a negative recommendation based on my experience with the traffic nightmare up they up here. I feel this type of zoning change would not be a good fit for the future of our community. Thank you. John Newmore. Email received today, February 23rd. Actually, this is just a forward from Mr. Bertram to Mr. O'Shea and he forwarded it to me. So he didn't say anything. He just forwarded Mr. Bertram's response to him. This is an email dated Monday, February 22nd. Dear Planning and Zoning, my name is James Root and I live at 84 Lake Avenue. I I oppose the BRT Scotset Amendment Petition as it is presented as at this time. While there are appealing elements involved, such as the proposed prospect of more affordable housing and the mere discussion thereof, there is a worrying lack of mutual understanding between the city and the applicant and hence future developers. It does not seem to have improved since last attempt to pass the amendment. For anything this sweeping to be passed in a time of virus reduced public participation is necessary to have from the applicant, a better, more forthright explanation of their intentions in themselves and as they relate to the on the ground ramifications of such change in land use going forward. Sincerely, James Root. Email dated Monday, February 22nd. Hello, my name is Lindsay Glorio So, and I'm writing on behalf of myself and husband Michael. You reside at 3 South Meadow Drive, Danbury, Connecticut. We are strongly opposed to the proposed amendment to the zoning of this area and feel that that it would that it would, I think it means will be, but it would be extremely detrimental to our neighborhood and community. We bought our house just over a year ago and one one of the major attractions with the privacy of the backyard and the quiet neighborhood would know through traffic. There are many young children in this neighborhood right who ride bikes and several people who come just to walk for exercise at is a safe neighborhood with little traffic. We also have a small older dog who wanders at times and I have no concerns that my neighbors will stop for her or slow down. However, there is an access road put in. If there is an access road put into our neighborhood, I will always be fearful of people speeding through. This area is one of the quiet and peaceful neighborhoods left in Danbury and and I'm afraid that if zoning is amended, it will no longer be that and just become another shortcut found on ways which could lead to more reckless drivers, cars, break ins, which is a huge issue currently and crime in our beautiful neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns and representing our dissent in this proposition. Please feel free to contact me if you need anything further. Stay healthy and safe, Lindsay and Michael Glorio So. This is an email received Monday, February 22nd. I am 100% opposed to this petition as it does not conform to our present conservation plan of development. Introducing two and three family dwellings into a well established, single family neighborhood will disrupt the flavor of the neighborhood. I also believe when you change this for BRT Scotset LLC, it will change it for all single family zones in all of Danbury. I think this will be awful. I live in it. RA8 zone and we are already crowded. A developer need need but only buy up a few of our homes to reach desired land mass and this new zone change would allow a developer to rebuild many how many to rebuild many new places in what was a single family zone. Please do not let this happen. I hope you make the right decision for for all of Danbury. Lynn Waller. Additional email dated today, February 23rd. I received an email from Mr. Bertram regarding my misunderstanding of his proposal. Mr. Bertram is trying to profit from a bad investment by ruining the character of our neighborhood under the guise of providing shelter for the elderly. Please vote no. Sincerely, Mary Combs. Email dated February 22nd. Hello, I want to express my feelings about the change in residential zoning. I am truly opposed during the school year. I take King Street to Milltown Road to access 84 due to traffic. Changing the zoning codes would make traffic a nightmare. I wanted to live in a neighborhood, so I moved out of a condo complex and here in Danbury. Slowly, a transformation took place and my lovely condo became transient rental condos which attributed to the rising crime. The word neighborhood disappeared. Once again, I strongly oppose changing to oppose changing to our residential zoning. Thank you, Mikel Dubois. Email received Monday, February 22nd. Sharon, I'm writing to express my concern about the possibility of rezoning section 486, Damian, etc. This would be a total disaster. Try sitting in your car waiting for traffic to move along. And in early morning when Danbury High School buses are driving into the high school parking lot and all the other cars are lined up along Clappard Ridge in both directions to drop off their children for school. And how about the five o'clock commute driving up Clappard Ridge from the highway? That's another problem. We already have a large set of condos on Clappard Ridge. Why add more and clog up this section of Danbury more? Please keep our lovely section of Danbury from turning into a major highway with tons of cars. Don't take away the beautiful trees and animals that feed on these trees. Let nature prevail in this section of Danbury and not turn it into a major metropolis. Thank you, Maria Raw. This is an email to the zoning commission. Dear members of the zoning commission, I write in response to BRT Scotset proposal to amend the current regulations. I am adamantly opposed. The new proposal application is still nothing more than a wolf in sheep's clothing. Approval to undermine the economic values of the single family zone and such an approval will open the door for other applications to follow. Those of us have, those of us that have decided to locate in one of these single family zones have done so at a higher price point for per purchase and are charged for higher property taxes taxes accordingly. Along with your being voted on to the commission came the obligations to ensure the future of Danbury is better than the way we found it. I thank each of each of one of you for your continued service and shared love of our city. Please make a decision that you will that we will not regret. Robert Lotello. Email dated February 23rd. This is from, I was copying on it from a rich Cesario. And again, this is back and forth, so I'm just gonna read unless you want me to read Mr. Bertram's response. I'm just gonna read their Cesario's response. Thank you, Ms. Is that okay? The letters are in there completely. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bertram, for your pictures and information. My initial response is that no age restricted individual will be purchasing a four bedroom home and honestly, having experienced with the elderly, they are happiest with a one bedroom. They prefer as little as possible to maintain. Your plan of 28 housing unit, housing dwellings, including five with four bedrooms, 20 and 23 dwellings with two bedrooms, 46. Safety and traffic issues will not be lessened, as you say, because the foundations you're using were intended to be single family homes, 12, and each of them had four bedrooms, 48, which is less than the 66 bedrooms. The site in the site, in my opinion, isn't either safe or proactive. The site is very busy as it is and will end up being with a stoplight. So residents though, so those residents can can get across Route 39 toward 84. Every day, twice a day, we have a large student and staff population arriving and leaving the school site and not, and let's not forget the 40 or so buses. Sue Cesario. Email received today, February 22nd to myself, Sharon Cleeter. I'm filing this motion not to allow BRT to build a 250 unit complex in Danbury for senior for the following reasons. One, the city plan encourages this type of development in locations close to downtown, so residents can use public transportation or be able to walk to shopping, doctor's appointments, groceries, etc. The proposed location clearly has no public transportation making difficult for residents of the proposed communities to walk to anything. Hart would have to add a new route to accommodate residents of this development. Two, this if the city approves this proposal, it would open a Pandora's box. This exception request, if granted, will allow developers to build cluster housing, not only in my around my property, for example, Cotswell property, they will be able to build in many other areas of Danbury. I would forever change the fabric of my neighborhood as well as many other Danbury neighborhoods. Three, when BRT bought this property, they obviously knew the zoning. Now they want the city to basically bail them out by changing the zoning from single family to multifamily because they made a bad business decision in buying the present property. Again, for all the above reasons, I am against the proposal. Sincerely, Reggie Matthews. Email received Tuesday, February 23rd. Mrs. Cleeter, dear Ms. Cleeter, for my wife and I and for many of our neighbors, all of whom live close to this proposed condo project, it seems like a bad idea. Several reasons exist for this conclusion, among them, the following. Population overcrowning in Danbury, which condition already exists, excess road traffic, especially on Clappard Ridge, which has been true for years now. Danbury's oversight school enrollment, which is seriously underfunded, particularly by the state, Danbury is last out of the 167 school districts in this in the state with regard to state aid per pupil. So greater enrollment is a greater strain on meager resources, both financial and in connection with personnel, teachers, class size. The space under consideration might better be devoted to construction or to non-construction that alleviates rather than exacerbates these conditions. Another condo complex, another notch in BRT's belt is the last thing our community needs right now. Sincerely yours, Ronald B. Raw. A taxpayer, a substitute teacher and a Danbury resident since 1982. Again, this is a, I'm being copied on emails that Mr. Bertram emailed responses to emails that were read already into the record. So this is, I received it today at 4:01. Dear, hi, Dan, I appreciate your response. However, I disagree with your assumptions of the impact this project will have. Traffic from 12 single family dwellings versus traffic from 28 dwellings will absolutely increase. I'm not concerned with aesthetics. I am concerned that this will set a precedent for zoning modification in residential areas. This will have a negative impact on our neighborhoods and our property values. People's home, people's homes are one of their biggest life time investments. To risk this value is not acceptable and will drive more people out of our area. I'm not sure how familiar you are with Clappard Ridge. Is already congested and in need and in need of some traffic modifications. If you have been on Clappard Ridge at 7:15 or 2:30, you will see a very busy road. Adding a significant neighborhood will just increase the issues we are already trying to reduce. Can you also provide me what the net impact will be on city infrastructure? How will this impact our sewage system, water supplies and additional engineering to mitigate the burden on our city? What can I, can I ask why you are modifying your original plan of 12 single family dwellings? If it is due to a short sighted business decision by your firm, Danbury should not pay the price. Regards, Sheila DeAngelo. Getting there. Can I just take a sip of water if you don't mind?
Yes, you can take a sip of vodka if you'd like to.
Oh, boy. I'm almost at, I'm almost at the end. Okay. Tuesday, February 22nd. Sharon to Sharon Cleeter. Hi, my name is Sonia Havasi. I a resident of Clappard Ridge Road. Recently, I've learned about the zoning committee public hearing about the BRT Scotset project to amend section 486 of the zoning regulations, which would allow a five story, 250 foot long building on Clappard Ridge Road area. As a resident taxpayer, strongly oppose a proposed regulation change, if not as a property owner if not as a property owner, considering it would dramatically impact such a beautiful suburban area of our city and perhaps the property values for all the other reasons in the following paragraphs. Through the years, we have seen Danbury has built a large number of condos, although it is always good to welcome new neighbors. I believe it's common sense to weigh the pros and cons of any change in our community if we had the choice. With that said, as much effort I've put in it, I haven't found even one good reason to change the city regulations just to welcome a five story condo to our area, yet I can point numerous cons. Before take, when we think about the future, I am a believer we should learn from the past, along with the new condos already built in the city in the past decade, Danbury added a added up a number, a high number of students to the school system visibly not prepared to absorb them. The consequences of that continued mistake was exhaustedly debated last year when our city had to borrow the largest amount of money ever with significant part going to going exactly to fix the educational system. Another good reason for not changing the regulation is the Danbury streets capacity. It is known. It's known people from New York State have moved into Connecticut as never before, although other cities and towns have infrastructure to support them. It's clear that any to anyone, that's not the case in Danbury. As a reminder, the 60 plus million dollars borrowed last year were also needed to take care of the chaos on our streets and roads deteriorated through the years due to the excessive number of vehicles. Has anyone in the zoning commission noticed how many New York plates have transited through our street and roads in the last couple of years? Some might say Clappard Ridge Road is a state road and the city doesn't have to spend dollars repairing it, which is true. However, it's visible Clappard will have will have even more difficulty supporting all the traffic from residents of such a big condo, which will lead to excessive use of other roads and streets like Payden Aaron Road, Farm Street, Golden Hill Road, King Street, Dogwood Drive and Field Road, both connecting to Cohanza Street. Besides, according to some longtime residents, last time Clappard was paved was decades ago. No need to highlight the deteriorated conditions of the road of the road in yearly basis with minimal repairs prepared by the state that last luckily for a couple of months. Heavier traffic loads with more cracks and potholes. How could the city change the regulations with the only intent to approve a project that eventually will cause problems that by liability reasons, the city will not be allowed to solve. I understand a city is much more than infrastructure and money related issues, but also a large group of different people, yet with common values. Although it's undeniable, more is often is quite often synonym of cultural achievements and economic progress when it comes to a is quite often synonym of cultural achievements and economic progress when it comes to a community more with caution and the approval of the ones who have built it, such community is even better. And the majority of our community opposed the change to the regulation as the BRT sconsit condo construction. Let's not forget more can also bring downsides as criminality rates rise or heavier I-84 traffic during rush hours. At last, I'm not in any way an expert on the environmental impact of a five story built, building construction on that specific site, yet given the fact that we're talking about one of the highest parts in Danbury, it's easy to predict the streets and the buildings on the bottom side of the hill will suffer consequences and modify natural landscape. For the reasons above, I asked Danbury zoning committee to vote no to the section 486 proposed amendments with regards Sonia Havasi. Email received Monday, February 22nd. Dear Miss Cleatrow, after reading her letter to the zoning commission and planning commission, we are in agreement that the approval to amend section 486 of the zoning regulations to permit cluster active adult development in the RA 40 and 20 districts is not in the best interest of the citizens of Danbury. As you state, the proposed amendment may result in potential unacceptable unintended consequences throughout the city. Introducing two and three family dwellings into well established, single family neighborhoods as posed may disrupt and not protect the character of the neighborhood. We believe the single family neighborhood should retain their character and be kept as such. We request that our opposition to the petition be read into the meeting record. Thank you, Sharon and George Belafonte. Email received Tuesday, February 22nd. Hi, Sharon, please add my name and concerns to the list of those opposed to the proposed zone changes to allow the construction of a five story, 250 foot building in residential zone. The continual assault on residential neighborhoods must end and their historic charm preserve. Thank you. Sincerely, Thomas Hannah. This was also, oh, I'm gonna, I'll get to that at the end. Okay. February 22nd. Please let this email reflect that I am 100% against the amendment to the zoning of section 486, which would allow a five story building to be built in the vicinity of my property in Nine Coach Road. Thank you for understanding this matter, Brian DeAngelo. Email dated today, February 22nd to Sharon Cleatrow, planning director. I submitted testimony expressing that I'm against the proposal to change the zoning so that the apartment conflicts may be built in my neighborhood. After receiving clarification from the builder through an email chain, I'm still adamantly opposed to this proposal and request the zoning commission, please deny this application. Please read this into the record, the public, I'm sorry. Please read this into public record and by email. Thank you, Kathy Anderson. Email Tuesday, February 23rd. Hi, Sharon, we are still contesting the present proposal, BRT, and against the change of zoning, Reggie Matthews. Email received today. Sharon, I'm forming the second reply from Dan, Dan Bertram. We are not swayed to agree with his intent or projections. We live and drive in this neighborhood every day. The property does not meet the needs of the elderly. They will not be able to go for a walk on this hill, even in summer. And there is nowhere to go without a car, bus, no bus service, no access to train, no food stores. This is a wrong site for such a project and certainly not in meeting with the needs of our aging population. Sue Cesario. And finally, this is an email I received today in letter form. Dear Miss Cleatrow, I am not in favor of the petition of BRT SCONSET, which proposes floating AR zones and requests for variance regarding development of property owned at 113, 115 Clappard Ridge Road. Repose 250 foot five story complex does not belong in a neighborhood of single family homes, some of which were built on family farms, which would increase traffic on Clappard Ridge Road, which is a rural road already heavily traveled by commuters from both New York and Connecticut alike. It would place undue burden on emergency services. Quality, quality of life on the ridge would suffer too, as its neighbors would be subjected to increased noise and glare of an illuminated complex, its parking lots and common areas. This is a detriment to our neighborhood and to Danbury in general. If approved, this floating plan can happen anywhere, open space or not, rural or not. Sincerely, Donna Hodge. And then the, I got a couple of, I was copied, again, I, we talked about this on email responses from the petitioner to people who submitted letters with no other comments. So in fact, Mr. Bertram copied me on it. So I don't know how you want to handle those because it's not really anything for me to read into the record. It's like him going back and forth with, and there's a couple of them. So we can, Mr. Marcus, if you want, obviously they're part of the record because an email sent to me, I have to print it out, put a file copy in. But it's not a letter in opposition. It's just this back and forth between Mr. Bertram and the, and the people who express some concerns. So I have a couple of those and we will print them out and put them into the record.
Thank you. Additionally, let me ask you, Ms. Cleatrow, the, the additional emails that you got that were not included in the agenda packet. You're just going to post, you're just going to post those up and have those available for the record, for the public, for the next meeting.
Yes, we have a list of the, the ones we posted with the first agenda. We have a list of the ones we posted with the second agenda. And then after we posted the second agenda, I continued to get from the minute we posted it to, you know, six o'clock tonight, series of other emails. So, and we would continue to do that as long as the hearings open, but we will, yes, we will post those. We'll scan everything, everything scanned in, but we will post it on the next agenda.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you very much. So now that what we read in, I'm going to be asking, and I'm, we're going to do it slow so I could make sure we see hands. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? And I see the first hand is Paul Rotello. And I'm not going in any particular order. It's just whatever hand I see or, or Ms. Reed tells me she sees, we're just going to go there. Mr. Rotello, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's with some ambivalence that I start my comments this evening because the specificity of the proposal from Mr. Bertram and Mr. Marcus is, is, you know, all things considered relatively low impact. I'm not going to be making any friends up on Thacker Ridge, although in full disclosure, my extended family does own property up there, spacious property on, on top of the hill. It's quite lovely up there, but this project has been severely downsized or profoundly downsized from the original intention. I, I bring this up because this is a legislative meeting. And while the director's comments focus exclusively on the legislative aspects, as did attorney Marcus's comments, addendums to the staff report. A good portion of the petitioner's testimony this evening consisted of site specific comments, site traffic, road trails, foundations, three car garages, things that aren't particularly relevant to a legislative decision that's facing the zoning commission in the city of Danbury this evening. Again, you know, we have to separate these two things, the potential manifestation of a legislative change and the legislative change itself. And we spent an awful lot of time, as did comments from neighbors, understandably so, on the manifestation and not so much on the, on the legislation. I'd really like to speak about the legislation this evening and not so much about the project. To begin with, we need to back up a little bit. Attorney Marcus made a, made a somewhat provocative comment, and I think it's essentially unproven or at least unfounded that there is a demand for cluster housing for the elderly outside of a mainstream urban area. He seems to be saying that as people are aging in place, they want to isolate. My experience has been the opposite. That as people begin to face limitations in their physical and mental acuities, they, they want more support and not less. So the, the basis of this, of this petition is that we need to somehow transfer elderly housing from, from where it's allowed in Danbury now, which is in a more urban environment so that we can, we can satisfy a demand for elderly housing in, in more of an ex-urban environment. And I, I would challenge that assumption just immediately. I mean, it seems to me that everything else follows from that. And if that is not true, then the rest of the petition is relatively unsupportable. In addition to that, it does bring up this somewhat sticky point that you leverage what people have purchased in good faith, homes on spacious lots, half acre zoning, one acre zoning, two acre zoning, whatever it happens to be. In this particular case, it's half and one acre zoning. And they've purchased that property under specific conditions set down by the city for decades. And now we come along and we change the parameters of that, of that, of that situation. And we do it essentially without their permission. I, I think as public officials, we need to engage in some sensitivity with their position and respect their investment in their history. I mean, it might be great. I, I can't stipulate that, that what I said before is, is, is proven that as people age in place, they want to be in a more urban environment than, than one that's less. But if, if that's not true, if they do want to be in one that's more country and, and less urban, we need to open up a dialogue with the people that are already living there because we are going to be increasing the density and removing some of the value, if the value is indeed in the aspect that it has less density. You, you, there's a bit of a catch 22 there. You're, you're flocking there because it's less dense. But by doing so, you're making it more dense. And this is a conversation, I think, that really needs to be had at the citywide level. My suggestion would be that the petitioner and that the attorneys and that the land use officials take this concept and bring it up during the next plan of conservation and development and come up with a, a citywide plan that addresses this issue, if it indeed even needs to be addressed. I think, again, we need to go back to attorney Marcus's first point, that there is a demand for this, that the city can't meet because we simply don't have a mechanism of placing these facilities in a, in a, in a less urban environment. So I, I would, I, I am, if somebody came to me and said, hey, Paul, we would like to, you know, Dan would like to go in front of the ZBA like they did on Main Street and put this in front of the ZBA for a site specific variance. I would probably have less of an issue with it. In terms of its effect on Danbury, it would still have as much of an effect, deleterious or not, on the, on the specific site that was chosen. But to somehow take this, this concept that we need to diffuse elderly housing into a more country environment and attach it to the entire city of Danbury, all 44 square miles, regardless of what the, what the, the planners have, have isolated in terms of the, I think, three particular places that this could go in is, is, makes me somewhat uncomfortable. I, I would ask, obviously, we're going to continue this meeting, but, but I would ask that the basic assumptions of, of the, of the goal of doing this be, be investigated in a more forthright, in a more full manner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rotello. Commission members, any questions of Mr. Rotello at this time? And I don't think I see any. So now I will ask again, is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? I see a hand of Mr. New Miller. Mr. New Miller, please.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Chairpeople. I appreciate your time and effort in hearing all our concerns. Unless you live up here in Clappard Ridge, all the studies that they could do as far as traffic, you can throw out the window. Unless you live up here on a daily basis and experience the traffic that's up here, any traffic that is thrown on the track, Clappard Ridge is like throwing additional traffic down a mill plane road. There's been many a time when I've left my house up here on Coach Road to go to a doctor's appointment and have had to call the doctor's appointment and reschedule because I was stuck in traffic up here and couldn't attend. And me being with, having a little fiscal disability, it does mean a lot to me to be down at doctors or fiscal therapy on time. And the traffic up here is horrendous. You're just making a bad situation worse up here. That's all it is. So I just wanted to keep it short and sweet and make my opinion. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. And ladies.
And ladies, thank you. Any questions of Mr. New Miller? Before I forget, Ms. Cleatrow, I want to thank you. Thank you, thank you for reading those in. I don't even know if I said thank you before, but thank you for reading those in.
You're welcome.
I'm asking again for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, and I see a hand of Representative Ken Gucker. Mr. Gucker, please.
Good evening all, and Sharon, thank you. I think we all owe you not just a dozen flowers, but probably a garden. I know you probably killed half of the Amazon rainforest printing all that out. And I'm sure the city of Danbury at least owes you a few printer cartridges at this point to do all that. So thank you for all you do. I'm Ken Gucker. I live at 89 Payden Air and Road here in Danbury, and I am obviously opposed to this project. What is interesting about this is this is a amendment to the zoning laws that affect the entire city of Danbury, but yet we're, we're focusing on a site specific location, which normally in the past, I think most people would flag as being site specific and saying that that stuff really shouldn't matter. It should be based on the merits of how this would affect the entire city of Danbury. You know, what we're looking at is a zone change to adding multifamily residents in RA 20 and RA 40 zones, anything over 10 acres. I know they put some caveats in there as far as being accessible to city water, city sewer, which would normally be consistent with cluster developments. I do disagree with the idea or the fact that the Cotswell property would not be considered with this because the Cotswell property actually does touch an arterial road and it is serviced by city water, city sewer. Cotswell property goes all the way up to Route 37, which last I knew was a arterial road. It feeds a lot of communities. Granted, it would be a little bit difficult to get through the environmental, the environmental conditions that are there. But that be it said, it's still going forward, could be technically done. You know, anytime we do these zone changes, and I always say this, it kind of infuriates me that land use attorneys get up and make it sound like this is going to be the best thing since sliced bread. We're going to love it. We're all going to benefit from it and it's going to be fantastic. I remember such a discussion back in the olden days with a, with a little known area called Scupple Road. I remember the, I remember the attorneys coming forward with the very first condominium project that was going to happen up there and said, this is going to be fantastic for Scupple Road, and it's going to be, and this one particular project will be the only one that ever happens. And it'll be right in this location and it won't spread. Now we go forward about 20 years. I don't think there is a single family house left on Scupple Road. The entire road has been converted to condominiums, which is going back to the very thing of when we do these zone changes, we open up Pandora's box and we don't know where it's going to go. Much of the zone change, as you already know, we have to think long term down the road, not what exactly can happen today, but what can happen in the future? What things are we going to be looking at in the future? You know, listening to, I want to clarify one thing. The term, the, the term high density and high density housing. Yes, you can take that and say, in my opinion, condominiums and any, any such projects that are adding more than what should normally be there. I consider high density. Now, if you're going to look at the actual footprint of the project on the land, okay, you could say there's no density or very little density, but when you look at the amount of individuals occupying that land, which then turns into how many people are using the utilities of the city, the roads of the city, et cetera, et cetera. That's where you get to your high density. At one point, there was a thought through the city of Danbury that when we put in these high density condominium complexes or multifamilies, et cetera, that we would not be affecting the school systems. There was a thought at one time that condominiums did not add to the school overpopulation problem. As we know, that is not true. Danbury is one of the fast growing education centers. We now have to build at least three more schools to catch up. A year and a half ago, the, the board of education was, was very surprised to learn that 600 additional students showed up and they didn't know where they came from. And they, they contributed a lot of that to downtown with these multi two family and three family housings that's going. So how does, how does a developer normally get around that? Well, they age restricted at age 55 or 50 and say that people of that age will not have children. They will not go to the schools. But you heard Mr. Marcus say right off the bat that the only one person in that house has to be of the age of 55. The rest of the family could be of a younger age. Thinking it's going to be active older adults. I mean, technically now I could buy one of these units and I'm not ready to move into condominium and I still need to go to work. When we get into traffic, the traffic studies always amaze me. It's like listening to an environmental impact committee meeting when they bulldoze a hill down and remove all the and remove all the trees, and they put in a lot of non-permeal surfaces, and somehow all of the stormwater runoff is just going to disappear because they have figured out magic ways to make it happen through various engineered systems. The same thing with traffic. Somehow, we could sit here, we can add more physical bodies into a piece of property, more vehicles and more people, and somehow the traffic decreases. I don't know how, I don't know why, but somehow in every traffic study, in every one of these zoning meetings, traffic is always never an issue. But then again, when you travel these roads, you find different. I will tell you, when you when you heard about the many accidents that have happened up on Clackboard Ridge, I know that for a fact. And I will say, the last time that this project came up, I decided to take a drive up to look at this this piece of uh real estate uh up at Scotset Place and see it for myself. And I had accidentally had driven by, the little white gates were closed, so you could not actually go onto Damian Drive to go look. So I drove down to the next driveway that follows it on the left, and I sat there at the intersection of Ledgemere with my directional on, waiting to make that turn into that driveway so that I can get out and take a look up the hillside. I don't know what made me think of this, but I happened to look up in my rearview mirror and noticed a blue Toyota getting very large very quickly in my rearview mirror. And if it had not been for me seeing that and driving on sadly onto Holly Robinson's lawn, sorry, Holly, uh to get out of the way, I would have been one of the one of the incidences that happened on that road. The guy skidded by me with his brakes locked up because, again, the traffic, people are driving fast, distracted, et cetera. That's a problem. So now we get up to the Damian property, since this seems to be the focus of everything. One of the complaints that had happened with the Damian property from people that live on Eastwood and Eastgate Road, especially Eastgate Road, was when that project was originally built, the blasting, the clearcutting and all of the uh that was done up there to make the site so that they could pour in the foundations led to massive amounts of stormwater runoff. Led to massive problems below, uh where the neighbors now had to deal with all of this. Now, I know this is not in your purview, that all goes into environmental impact, but that project did have a negative impact on that community as far as their conditions, their wealth, their health, their safety and their well-being, because now their their neighborhood had dramatically changed. Being that they had turned it into a cluster development, now it meant that they could cluster the houses together in a piece of property that really is not suitable. Because even though it's fourteen acres, if you really were to go up there and try to build logically up there, you would have to do only a cluster development up there because the property does not lend itself to normal construction. When we talk about the houses that are up there, I did a study. Now, uh we were just told by the applicant that I think I think four, three or four, five of the houses were were built and sold. Well, if you go on the city of Danbury's vision appraisals right now, out of all the houses that have been built by BRT, only one has been sold. All the rest are owned by BRT. Now, I don't know if they're renting them and they still own them, or if they have conditions to buy. I am not sure, but the only one was was uh Mr. Kovetki who who testified earlier. The other two houses that are on Damian Road have been there since the sixties, and those are the Damies, the original owners of the property. So even though there's buildings up there, they haven't sold. Now, the argument that we need to do this cluster development and this high-density cluster development at best is because residential uh residential housing is down. I suggest that you go talk to any real estate agent right now and ask them how the housing stock is here in Danbury. Houses are selling above market value. They are hitting the market, and they're sold before they even get the sign on the front lawn. Most of the states in the Union right now, because of the COVID situation that has been going on, are in a deficit. Connecticut was projected to be to have a two-billion-dollar deficit uh last this year because of all of the unexpected consequences of COVID-nineteen. Thirty-one thousand families moved into Connecticut. Now, with the moving into Connecticut, with real estate transfer taxes and things that happened, the state of Connecticut did not have a two-billion-dollar deficit when it came time to do the numbers, but had a seventy-one-million-dollar surplus. That was due to people relocating from New York City, Westchester and others into the area of Connecticut, mainly along the Danbury-New York-Connecticut corridor. Because of that, Connecticut got out of the deficit as a surplus. But on the other aspect, if you go over to the ridge and you go over to Route two and Route one and go into the summit area, you will notice a lot of new people from New York State that have moved into there. Danbury housing stock is down. If Dan Bartram wants to finish the project he started, he can finish with the other, I believe I noticed in the picture, five foundations he has sitting there. He doesn't need to add, make it into six foundations, but he could finish the five and sell them at reasonable rates that work in the market that is around. Now, when he originally built these projects back in oh-seven, oh-eight in those areas, the price that he was asking was probably a little bit on the higher side, which is why it led to not being able to sell the remaining one, two, three uh three units that are sitting up there that they still own, that I believe are empty or rented or whatever he's doing, I haven't asked, I don't know. Now, if he was to sell those reasonable and then finish the other five, he would be able to finish with the original intent that he was granted with that property and not turn those additional foundations into two and three-family houses. Because also with those two and three-family houses, I would also like to know, and this is the problem that the city of Danbury ran into, when we allowed with the zoning board, the zoning rules, to change single-family houses into multifamily, two and three families, the things that were not considered, was where the cars are parking, how many vehicles would be involved, and that's when we ran into the problem of people parking on lawns, bulldozing their lawns down, turning their drug their front lawns into parking lots and changing the very tenor and the and the feel of the neighborhood. So going forward, I know I said a lot and I had a lot more, but after listening to Sharon's having to read all of that and having sympathy for, uh we've, I think we've covered a lot of this. I mean, a lot of the the excuses or the the justifications for this project are already covered. If Danbury gets below a ten percent affordable housing rate, they can come in and do affordable housing projects. I have one right around the corner from me. It was a project actually that when my mother used to work for a law firm that used to do the work for BRT in the eighties, that BRT wanted to put condominiums on in the eighties. They were denied that project because of the traffic on Route thirty-seven. And then what happened was Danbury fell below, and BRT had nothing to do with the project after that. But um twenty years later, the uh the Danbury fell below the ten percent threshold on affordable housing. Uh the proponent came in and built the new units there with some affordable housing, uh and that was the justification getting in. So the idea, do we need affordable housing? Yes. Does it have to be actually affordable? It should be, but there are provisions in there to allow that. I think it is a sketchy and dangerous slope to start introducing residential multifamily housing in RA twenty and RA forty zones. Because as we know, every one of these projects grows throughout the city, and we have to think beyond this project because we are looking at amending the zoning laws that affect the entire city of Danbury. I know of these other spots, the one that's on Pembroke Road, I believe that's right behind the Amber Room. That originally was cleared to be a cluster development, it was never built. So I can't imagine going in there and saying, okay, we're now going to allow you, instead of doing cluster development, we're going to allow you to put two and three-family housing in there as opposed to single-family housing, which is going to be two to three times the impact on the roads and everything else because we're allowing this to happen there. We've also got other areas of the city that are opening up. So again, I I implore you, uh take a look and remember Scupple Road. Remember Clackboard Ridge originally when it was single-family houses? And as those single-family houses got torn down, condominiums got put in their place. This just exasperates the problem. So again, I I thank you for your time, and uh if I come up with anything else, I guess I'll bring that up at the next meeting. But thank you very much for hearing our our concerns and our issues.
Thank you, Representative Gucker. Commission members, are there any questions of Representative Gucker at this time? Um, I actually have one. Um can can you talk a little, I don't I don't understand what you meant about um why Cotswold's piece wasn't pointed out in in Mr. Sullivan's map? You said that they they do touch an arterial roadway? Or what we what were you getting at on that?
Cotswold is seventy-eight acres of continuous land. It basically starts at Route thirty-seven by the covered bridge condominiums at Jeanette. Okay, there's a ten-acre parcel that we were able to save that's owned by the city between uh the the cover bridge. Um I'm trying to remember the name of it, it's where Noble Gas Station is now.
Right.
You have Noble Gas Station, as you're going up thirty-seven, you then have the cover bridge that goes into the condominiums there. There is a narrow ten-acre parcel that goes up to the high school right there, and then Cotswold starts, and it goes all the way up to the reservoir along Payden Air Road. Now, I know it's difficult to do, you know, but again, I never say never because as time goes on, environmental engineers find ways to make rocks float on lakes. So I don't know where it would go or be, but the bottom line is that land does have access to city water, city sewer, and Route thirty-seven is most definitely an arterial road.
Thank you. I was I was curious as to what you were getting at before. Thank you very much. Uh is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Uh, I don't see hands, page one.
Councilman Haddad?
Who said that? Mr. Chianese?
Yes, my camera doesn't work.
It's okay, I saw your blacklit. Um you wish in opposition, Mr. Chianese?
Uh yes, if I may.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to just start out by pointing out to to Mr. Marcus when he mentioned Lake Place. Um back in the day, you know, that was my first ever speaking at a public hearing. I was twelve years old, so um I was there, Mr. Marcus, if you, I probably don't remember me. I was a scrawny little twelve-year-old um speaking against it. Um and here I am today. Um I just want to point out a few things that um that Sharon is actually right on point when she mentioned unintentional impacts. I know there was a lot of discussion only on one focus off of Damian Road, but there's a bigger impact for the rest of the city. I know Representative Gucker mentioned the Cotswold piece. Uh Councilman Rotella mentioned a few pieces, and I can probably mention three or four right in the sixth ward that can definitely, where this parcel or zone change can definitely affect. Um Sharon's letter had a lot of great points in it, and I think the biggest point she mentioned is the the plan of conservation, which that committee is actually meeting as we speak. So I think the best part is really to take a timeout and actually make this part of the plan of conservation because the issues that were raised at this meeting is not just that one piece. It does affect the entire city. You know, housing for the seniors, yes, that that has not been addressed effectively within our city. And I think it does need to be if um a part of that conservation that that happens. You know, as as we move forward, I think that's the probably the best thing we can do is really just take a timeout and actually have the commission address these concerns that were raised tonight on both sides. And both sides have raised good points of why the need is there and where the where this need is best served, whether it be in an urban environment where Councilman Rotella brought up that, yes, as you get older, that you need to be more within an urban setting. You know, I work in a nursing home and I see the needs. As you get older, you you definitely need to be with other people and not farther apart. So that needs to be addressed in more detail. So I just wanted to just not re- re- bring up all the points that were raised this evening, but I think the answer is really is look at it from a global it from a global standpoint, how this how this will impact those cities as a whole. So I just wanted to just bring that up, Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chianese. Twelve years old when they did Lake Place, I I can't believe that I'm that much older than you.
Ah, see, good old days.
Old when, I was old when they did Lake Place, you were just a kid.
Ah.
Commission members, any questions of Mr. Chianese? I don't see any. Let me ask again if there's anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition?
Yeah, I think Councilman Perkins is raising his hand.
So I don't uh.
You see his raised hand?
Okay, no, I don't, but anyway, Councilman Perkins. I don't know where you are, what's where you are here, but uh go ahead, unmute your mic and uh. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, yes, you, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I just want to beat a beat a horse. I I I agree with um a lot has that a lot that has been said already, and my concern is sweeping changes, sweeping zone changes across the city. Um, we've done that in the past with various things, you know, P and D stands out in my mind, and I just think it's dangerous and it's just a bad precedent. I uh wouldn't want that to happen again in this occasion. So that's really all I have to say on that matter. Thank you, uh Commissioners.
Well, thank you, Councilman Perkins. Uh Commission members, are there any questions of Councilman Perkins at this time? I don't see any, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition at this time? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? I don't see hands, I don't, is Ms. Reed, do you see any hands up on your board? No. So let me say one more time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? We're now going to move to Attorney Marcus. Attorney Marcus, is there anything you want to present to?
Uh, Haddad?
Yes.
Just just to be on the safe side here, before we move to opposition, Mr. Matthews, at the very beginning of the meeting, seemed as though he was very interested in wanting to speak. I just wanted to make sure that he understood that if you if he had some comments that were that he wanted to make. Um he's coming close to the end, this is actually the end of public comment. We're going to be turning over to Attorney Marcus, and after Attorney Marcus does rebuttal, there won't be any more public comment tonight. So um I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Matthews, since in the very beginning of the meeting, he was interested in speaking, um wanted to make sure he was aware of that.
Yes, he did, he he did express an interest in the chat section. Um, I see Reggie Matthews here with his mic muted. I don't, I see him in the on the board without a without his hand raised and his mic still off. So uh you mentioned it, I'm assuming he's there and he heard it. Um, if we continue this, we're going to be doing this again, all of the people have another opportunity at the next meeting, but thank you for extending that out to him. Attorney Marcus?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's it's uh tempting to get the last word, but it's late as well. Uh, I'm just going to make a broad comment that it's unfortunate that people wrote their letters in opposition before they heard the application because even though Sharon uh read close to fifty letters in opposition, actually, some of them were from from the same people, uh they wrote more than once. But there were like three common themes in the opposition. A lot of people mentioned the five-story, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long building. That I would, I'm going to compile my notes, but out of the fifty people, I would say, out of fifty letters, I would say almost twenty or twenty-five of them mentioned that. And that's a lot of people talking about something that's not involved in our project. We're not doing that, we can't do that. It would be impossible under these regulations to build anything like that. So it worries me that a lot of people are commenting on a plan that that is not encompassed within our concept for the zoning regs. That's one thing. What really worries me, quite honestly, is I'd say that out of the fifty letters or that were read in, forty of them mentioned traffic concerns on Clappard Ridge. Now, again, it's a shame that all of these people have been have dwelt on that before they either heard Steve Sullivan this evening or better yet, uh Joe Bel- Belstein looks at the next uh hearing uh who will talk about traffic. And quite honestly, if traffic, I don't doubt that, you know, the people honestly think traffic. Some people called it a nightmare. If traffic's a nightmare up there, I really kind of wonder how the city just put a huge expansion on the Danbury High School without addressing that. I mean, we just. I mean, we just finished a major expansion on the largest high school in the state of Connecticut in an area where the residents are saying traffic is a nightmare. So that worries me outside of my application this evening because quite honestly, we didn't create this traffic nightmare, we're just proposing a zoning regulation. So if it exists, the city has to deal with it. It's not, it's not BRT's problem to, to feel remorse that they've done something here. I mean, they got a couple of houses occupied on Damian Drive, uh, and that's about it. But the real issue is, why would people who live in an, an area that is considered a traffic nightmare be so concerned about the character of the single-family neighborhood? Because in reality, single-family neighborhoods don't exist in good planning and zoning in a traffic nightmare. Those concepts are in opposition to each other. So I'm writing down, and I, you know, I try to take down names and, and concepts, but it was the 250-foot-long, five-foot-story building, it was the traffic. And then there's a sense that somehow the, the active adults have to be put in a different area. I mean, a couple of people said in commercial areas, there must be commercial zones where we could park active adults to live out the rest of their lives. I mean, that concept to me is frightening. So I'm listening to this, but what really strikes me is that all of these letters were written before anybody really analyzed what we're talking about here. The low density, even though I know that some people think that anything other than 40,000 square foot or 20,000 is not low density, but really it is. The low impact, the footprint that we're talking, all of that is significant. And one person actually said, where are all the animals going to go? But we're actually creating in the zoning reg significant open space. Well, maybe that's where the animals would go because quite honestly, suburban sprawl, which is the traditional one-acre, half-acre, single-family lot, doesn't do that. It doesn't de, deal with, with animal wildlife refuge. So I'm looking at all this, I'm saying, everybody is saying the same thing, it's traffic. Well, Joe Bosky will talk about the real impacts of traffic, and quite honestly, if, maybe, you know, you get a different perspective as you get older. God, I can't believe that Ben Chinisi was really 12 years old while practicing law in front of the zoning commission of the City of Danbury. That's frightening too. But anyway, but when you get older, you know, you realize you don't get in the car that often to run out and do things that you did when you were younger. A, because maybe there are not many things to do when you get older or whatever. But the fact of the matter is that we will give you a real readout of traffic in our, as it, as it applies to our concept. And, and, you know, of all the comments, I hate to say this, but, you know, uh, because I don't want to give Paul Rotella, you know, a, a inflated ego, but I think Paul's comments, it'd be hard to do, right? I'm watching the chairman smile, that'd be hard to do. But no, but in reality, Paul says that this is not project-specific, he's correct. We're talking about a concept that is legislative. He's absolutely correct. And, and that, uh, that basically he would like to, to investigate some of our basic assumptions that this type of housing is not available in Danbury, and that it is also a market that needs to be served. And we'll try to provide him with some information on that. But I don't want to go into each item specifically, I want to just say that we've, I'm listening to the, the issue, the issues that have been raised. Some of them are significant issues that have nothing to do with us, we've got to live with traffic conditions. But at the end of the day, I want to dwell more on the areas of Danbury which will be impacted or potentially impacted by the zoning regulation change. Uh, we'll take a look again at the Cotswold, uh, property, uh, that Ken Gucker was so concerned about. And, you know, interestingly, he spent a lot of time talking about Scupple Road, but I'd like to focus more back on, on Kenosha and say, could you really see single-family houses on one-acre lots where Lake Place is today? I mean, with the Danbury Mall down the street and with all the industrial uses across the street, I mean, that would have been preposterous. So there, you talk about, I think, zoning that really was, was future-oriented. It was, it was, he was thinking ahead of the, thinking ahead of the game instead of after the fact. And that's what I think we're talking about here. So I'm not going to waste much more of your time because we are going to continue this. I'm going to thank the commission for their patience and, uh, the fact that some of the people on the screen actually look like they're still awake, not Rick Jowdy, but he's, he's struggling to do that. But, uh, the, uh, but the fact of the matter is that, uh, we'll, we'll try to answer some of these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Marcus. Commission members, anything of Attorney Marcus at this time? I don't see anything. I am going to ask a question, uh, I have done, I, I did take notes, and I do want to ask a question of Mr. Sullivan if I can. I don't have the map in front of me, Mr. Sullivan, but I'm going to say I'm in my car and I'm driving up Damian Drive. If you can tell me the lot directly at the head of the end of the cul-de-sac and the house is on the right, if you can tell me the height of those buildings compared to what the height of a single-family house would be, I'd be curious in knowing that. I'd be curious in knowing if you know that, first of all.
Yeah, I, um, and maybe, um, Mr. Bertram can weigh in here too, but I believe there's just going to be two-story dwellings.
Okay, so...
With a, with a walkout basement.
Okay, so in other words, let, let's assume that this petition was never submitted and Mr. Bertram built his subdivision out. Clearly, there would be a new face to Clappard Ridge driving up and down that road because there would be new houses there. It, it appears to me that, which would be shocking to begin with, but that would be as of right, you have that right to, to build that single-family house now. So I was curious as to what the proposed, if approved, um, unit would be in, in height in relationship to that single-family dwelling that's as of right.
So if I may, Chairman Haddad?
Mr. Bertram, please.
So, and, and this is actually in some of my correspondence because I was trying to get information out, right, to the people who were worried about a five-story building and the like. So some of the language you'll see in some of my responses is that you'll see a two-story face from the roadside, Damian Drive side, and then a three-story face, which is exactly what the buildings are now. We're not asking for any height considerations or anything for this, it's just a differently configured top floor, um, on those seven proposed, um, three-family dwellings. So no, no extra mass, um, and nothing in the zoning regs, uh, for, for different heights that we're, we're asking for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan as well, thank you, Mr. Bertram. Commission members, anything else this evening? I'll reiterate, we are going to continue this, and I'm going to look for a motion to have this meeting continued. I don't see... Uh, Mr. Jowdy? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Almeida, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I did. Um, I guess I'd like to make a motion to continue this, uh, for the next meeting. I think, um, it's getting late, and, um, I'm sure everybody wants to kind of go to bed right now, it's 11:12. So, um, yeah, I can make a motion to continue this, uh, to the next meeting.
Commission members, is a motion made by Mr. Almeida to continue this public hearing with no restrictions on future conversation? Additional exhibits will be submitted to the March 9th, 2021 meeting. Is there a...
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman, with a quick comment that 11:12, some of us old guys think this is early.
Mr. Malo, you used to run till 1 o'clock in the morning with these things. Thank you. The motion, motion seconded, uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I don't hear any opposition and I don't see any opposition. So this public hearing will be continued. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate everyone's time. Let's see what else we got here to go over. We don't have any continuations of any public hearings. We don't have any old business. We don't have any new correspondence. We don't have any other matters, any other matters, any other matters. Without anything else on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Malolo, please.
I, um, forgive me, or if I, if I'm, if I'm wrong in doing this, I was just sitting here thinking, you know, this is the second meeting that we've had, and I just wanted to, I don't know if we did this or not publicly, but I wanted to extend our condolences on behalf of the zoning commission on our secretary, Ms. Reed, um, who, you know, about a month ago, uh, lost her mother. I, I know we acknowledged it, we said, no, we, so, no, by sending her, sending her something in mail, but I don't know if we publicly acknowledged it, so I wanted to just, uh, publicly acknowledge that, um, this evening.
We all, we all agree, and thank you very much for pointing...
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Hylinski, you're on mute. Unmute. Ms. Hylinski, unmute. I think she's...
I got it.
Okay.
No, I can't get it. Am I out?
Yeah.
Okay, and I just wanted to say, um, we didn't say the pledge, so we got to remember to do that.
I'm going to, you know what, I don't have technology, I'm going to ask Mr. Malolo if he could do a screen share of the flag at the beginning of the next meeting, and we can do the pledge, and maybe Ms. Reed can add it to the agenda.
Yes, we can, we can take care of that, Mr. Haddad.
Oh, that's, thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Hylinski for that. Is a motion and a second to adjourn?
I didn't get the second, who seconded?
Who seconded? Give it to somebody.
That was Commissioner Malolo.
Okay.
Or was, that's right, it was Rob.
No, I was the close the public hearing second.
Okay.
Give it to Angie, let Angie second the motion.
Okay, we'll let Angie do it. Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, we...